All right, we're back in a regular session. Welcome folks. First thing on the item agenda is public comment for any items on the agenda. Does anybody have any public commentary? Thank you. No thank you, I'm there. Next thing is license events and permits. The first thing we have is a St. Stevens annual picnic. Is a representative of that here? Can Chief, do you want to lead some discussion on that then, or?
Uh, I believe all of these have been vetted by the events committee. Um, and they were, you know, the typical, the typical things that we do and there were no issues with any of these, to the best of my knowledge, which is generally.
Um, why don't we do them one at a time anyways though? So, is there, I think there's anybody's here, so, nobody's here on St. Stevens annual picnic? We have matters of in our package, uh. Any questions or discussion, if not, there are motion?
Make a motion, we approve St. Stevens Church, sixteen Helen Avenue, for a one day liquor license. Common's, uh, from nine twenty-two, picnic, uh, two o'clock three A.M. Set up date is nine twenty-two, eight thirty A.M., break down three P.M.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes, name, that's unanimous, Tracy. Next one's a one day liquor license for interface social services, Holly Hill Farm on nine six, anybody here for that? Okay, any discussion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Some, you know, they, uh, they have something more than that.
No, I don't want to make a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, one day liquor license for Holly Hill for private dinner, uh, farm table dinner for twenty guests, Friday, September sixteenth, at nine nineteen, early about six to ten P.M. I will produce as of twenty.
Okay.
On two thirty-six years of road control has a message.
Second.
Second, any discussion, any, all those in favor say aye, aye. Foes, that's unanimous, Tracy. One day liquor license for the friends of Holly Hill. This is twice for Holly Hill.
Different organizations. They're a venue of one and a sponsor on the other, no?
All right.
Uh, make a mo- is there any from, from Holly Hill Farm? Make a motion, we approve the one day liquor license for Holly Hill Farm, two thirty-six years in the room. Under the Harvest Moon Gala, fundraising event from the farm. Non-profit Friday, September thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, six to nine P.M., two thirty-six, four o'clock in the morning. Number of participants is one fifty to two hundred, with malt, malt and wine and malt beverage only.
Second?
Second.
All those in discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, that's unanimous, Tracy. Entertainment license for Cohasset Chamber of Commerce. This is a family day, right? This is something new. Is there anybody here for that?
We, this, we approved the, if this is for the liquor license, we approved the event.
To approve the event, this is just for the entertainment license.
Of the entertainment, yeah.
Make a motion, we approve the entertainer license for Cohasset Chamber of Commerce, eight twenty-four, two thousand nineteen.
Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This weekend.
I was just gonna say, uh, that usually we have the winter stroll, which really works well. And just so the public knows, this is the first time that we're trying essentially a stroll or activity in the downtown area in the summertime. So, it's a whole family day activities and.
Since Cohasset Day, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we used to have Cohasset Day and then we stopped doing that and it's great. Hopefully we'll see everybody out there and all the businesses are getting ready.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a changeover of manager Cohasset Harbor Inn. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, the film permit, that was withdrawn.
They withdrew.
Yes, film permit, we were gonna, Netflix was gonna make a movie and, uh, they withdrew. So, that happens, sometimes people come in, wanna do movies and, and they withdraw.
That was our opportunity, Carrie.
Yeah, we were looking forward to that. Okay, wanna make the motion anyways, the motion of regret. Change of manager Cohasset Harbor Inn, do we have any individuals here for that? Come up, introduce yourselves. Help help what's going on, how you doing?
My name is Giannis Adams. I'm a general manager for, uh, for San Antonio Partners. And I will be the advocate for the manager of, of, of Deluva's with Glass and Gas and Hall Partners.
Okay, you wanna start off with anything that you might wanna say and as to what's going on, why there needs to be a change and why this is the, the problem we wanted to do?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, late June, uh, the manager of the license left our group, um, and so we've been looking for a replacement manager and, uh, Giannis is a general manager of all the properties and more specifically has spent some sort of time with Glass Harbor Inn. So, he thought it was appropriate that he be the candidate to replace him or stay on the old license. So, I'm glad we're here today.
Any questions on the board? Any comments, question?
And ask through the, uh, background check on the crowd chief quickly.
We look, the background check is.
Yeah, it's been, it's been completed.
Seen the back page somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, some of the people in the back can't hear.
Thank you for letting us know, if you can't, let us know, we wanna make sure you're here.
We'll try to speak up.
Yeah, we'll all speak up. And we'll open up windows and we're gonna try fresh air, so everybody breathe.
A political meeting with fresh air.
If the windows open.
Okay, talk you some.
So, uh, you reviewed the liquor license, uh, file of the town? Any questions?
Gi- Gi- just for point of reference, Giannis been with us since we.
I was just gonna say, he's been with you for some time.
Before you opened the doors.
Yeah, he's been with us and I, we live in this family from San Francisco. And so, he's really settling down here permanently, so we're all feel very fortunate to have him as part of the operation and, uh, large part of what you've seen throughout the properties that we've taken over, been a direct result of Giannis and the marketing stuff, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the application for the, um, the manager, the liquor manager for Cohasset Harbor Inn for Giannis, I'm gonna mess it up, Issa Gertens. All right, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, name, that's unanimous, Tracy. Thank you very much and good luck.
You too, thank you.
Nice to meet you. Next item on the agenda? One thing, excuse me. I had meant to say this before, whenever anybody passes anything out to the board, don't approach the, select me, give it to Tracy and then it's just a pattern going on, always take a look at it quickly and then pass it on to us, but, uh, that's the way things should be properly passed to the board. Even on one of employees, it's just yourself.
I was actually gonna pass it.
Yeah, not at all. So, the next item is Cohasset Common Revitalization Project update discussion. Uh, Jason, uh, Federico, and I think we've got some interesting news here.
Um, thank you guys for having us, so, we got approved from the state DOT for Complete Streets for two hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Uh, yeah, that's very good.
Congratulations, yes, everybody.
We apply for that and, yeah.
To do some work for the town common, um, it's for crosswalks, handicap ramps and some curb tightening, um, to help reduce traffic speeds. Uh, that's the policy that the Complete Streets is about. Making streets more comfortable for other forms of transportation other than just car traffic. So, as part of that, um, it'd be vertical granite curb put around the, the extent of this project is from Robert Jason to William Long, uh, Highland to North Main, that, that rectangle is the only portion that's funded as part of this project. It's to put vertical granite curb around that rectangle. Um, and if we do that, we need to deal with the parking that would not, no longer be able to happen, given the fact that people are currently parking, hop on the road and hop on the grass with the vertical granite curb, we won't be able to do that anymore. So, we came up with three alternative options basically, and what we'd be looking for you guys, uh, guidance is which option you guys would most prefer us to try and move forward with. Option one in the top right corner is diagonal proposed diagonal pull-in parking, uh, but in order to do that, you'd be turning Jason Road into a one-way street from Main Street to Highland and Long Road, a one-way street from Highland to North Main.
Excuse me, do, do you mind just pointing to the board, cause I think that'll help us in just showing like the orientation of the parking?
Yeah, so you have town halls here.
Yep.
The North Main Street here, so you'd be turning, uh, Jason Road into a one-way coming in towards town hall with a diagonal parking on the, the far side. In all these options, Highland and North Main stay the same, parking on one side of the street, on the opposite side of the street from the common. And then you turn William Long Road into a one-way street out with diagonal pull-in parking, uh, facing the church side.
Excuse me, so we actually will end up with more parking under that solution, is that correct or not?
The most parking is actually this solution, here.
But in all these, do we end up more, more parking on that first solution?
More parking we have today, I, legally, there's no parking out there, today if you were to enforce parking, there's not enough, this, you should not have a single car parked.
Right, so you get, you, you, so, so under the proposed diagonal, there'd be more parking.
Than none, yes. Me, but realistically, I don't know how many people park up on a given, on a night when there's.
Well, realistically, they don't.
I know, that's my point, so.
How many spots, how many spots would that open up?
It would, the, it goes from thirty-nine in the diagonal pull-in. The option two is to maintain two-way traffic on both of those roads, we'd only be able to parallel park on one side of the street. That would be thirty-two parking spaces and then parallel parking on both of the two side streets gives you forty-three parking spaces total, approximately.
If you did parallel on that fourth one.
Parallel, so you're coming in Robert Jason Road, one direction.
But you, you do one way, you do, they make it a one way, but on the third alternative, you're not making it a one way.
One-way two, this is, uh, the, this is a one-way street coming in.
And what's the second one?
And one-way street going out.
Gotcha, and what about the second one, right deal left?
This one?
Is that one way to?
Two-way direction.
You're keeping it, that's keeping things as they are, so to speak.
Yes, but adding, it, it encroaches a little bit outside the common to get that parking space in. Um, so you can see in all of these, the gray lines in the background are the edge of the pavement currently, so you have a little bit of an encroachment on the church property here, which is town property, but it's on, onto the grass and some encroachment on the, um, memorial side here. And you see that's similar in all the projects, that there's some minor encroachment, not a huge amount onto the, uh, off of the existing.
When you say encroachment, does that mean you're proposing to park on the grass or you're proposing to extend the pavement?
No, we'd be paving, yes, extend the pavement.
So, on the upper right one, the proposed diagonal one, which, that would be like during a, a voting day, you went one way out and, and out.
Yeah, yeah.
How many parking spaces are there?
Uh, thirty-nine total.
That was turned down by the historic common commission, it did not like.
Wasn't turned down, but they.
Did not like the angle parking.
This got a lot of pushback from people that it was brought forward to because they, they felt that it was bringing a downtown feel to the common area by putting diagonal parking. That's the feedback.
So, what does the fourth one do?
This one?
Yeah, does that do any diagonal parking?
No, that's all parallel, it just, this is the only option where we actually have parking on the, on, on the actual rectangle. Cause we were trying to, when we originally did this, eliminate all parking around the rectangle to make it feel more open. But given that this is the far ends, it won't really feel congested necessarily, you know, if we're eliminating the parking on the, on, on the Highland and North Main Street side of the common, it won't, you won't get that congested feel as much of parking.
Can you, you end up, I'm sorry, Diana?
No, 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 um, can you describe where the, where the sidewalks are and how they might change?
So, sidewalks would stay the same inside the rectangle realistically, they might, somebody did propose maybe pushing them in some to get, make more green space between the sidewalk and, and not, uh, on this one, uh, the sidewalk would push back to the backside of the parking spaces and wrap around and tie in to the sidewalk here and similarly to there. Uh, the same here, this one, the sidewalk is on the side of the parallel parking, um, no sidewalk here, um, crosswalks everywhere and here, the one note is we'd actually be eliminating the crosswalk that's right in front of the, um, school, across the street, the element, the preschool. One is it's not a safe crosswalk to begin with, it's in the middle of a road, people are walking out between parked cars. And if we implement this parking plan, there won't be a real need to go straight across the street because people's cars won't be parked on the other side of North Main Street, they'll be either parked on the same side of North Main Street or on one of the two side streets. There won't actually be parking across, people walk across to get to their car on the other side of the street, so there won't be that need to do.
And there would be crosswalks at each of that.
On either, every corner of the property would have crosswalks.
Okay.
And handicap accessible ramps at all locations too, that's part of the project.
So, so downtown Hingham where there's like the coffee shops and the ice cream shop, those are all angled parking?
Yes. Yeah, even downtown here, like on front of, across the street from Seabird, that's angled parking. And just so you know too, these are all technically sized more appropriately than the ones downtown too, so you won't be, have as much.
Yeah.
Push out of, part of the chief's agreeing to me, all these include reduction in lane widths, which will reduce speeds, especially on North Main Street, you'll have, as you can tell, I'm fitting all of that within the existing road layout. There's no encroachment on either the curb or onto the grass as part of this because we're making those two lanes skinnier. Reduce speed, but chief, chief agreed, there's no issue of getting apparatus through there in an emergency, people would just pull off to the side still and there'd still be enough space. But, you.
Diane?
So, so all the sidewalks around the, the re- the rectangle would be, would be upgraded and improved with any, do we have any money to go into?
No.
So, we're gonna go from these really nice sidewalks that are new and the new parking arrangement, whatever we were, were to decide.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And the, the, the actual traverses across the common are, are gonna stay.
Well, the, oh, no, yeah, that is, that I believe is, depend, I believe we have money to do the side, you mean the, the paths in the common.
The paths within the common, yeah.
At the group.
I believe we have money.
Because to, yeah, to go to, from something new, I mean, especially for handicap purposes.
Yes. I believe that is, there's money in there for that, I'd have to one-hundred percent confirm that, I haven't, I'm still in the.
Figuring out where to track pursuing answers, yeah.
Depending upon which, which way to go and, the other thing we have to determine is any, how much or what, to what extent of the granite curb out there is reusable versus not, if it's not a full width curb, we have to replace it, so it's, could any be free from forty dollars a foot to, for if we have to put new and it's twenty-eight if we have existing, so.
And curb heights, I have that.
Six inch.
Six inches.
Six inches, is that standard?
That's the standard.
Except for, we, they have about a foot and a half.
Do you think you're my law on that or?
About around Rogie.
My gosh, wow.
Okay, any, one thing I think, keep in mind, and correct me if I get it wrong, is, is that for the allocation of the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, essentially that's gonna pay for the, all these new sidewalks and curbing and so on. So, really all we need to decide, what we're deciding is, is after that's done, what will be the traffic pattern? And one thing, uh, I mean, we can keep in mind because there are two or three choices here about being shy about which one or whatever it is, we essentially could pick one of these and do it as either a pilot or just do it for six months and then come back and look at it after six months and change it if we want, it's, it's the pattern we're talking about. And the only reason I say that is one, so that we don't have to feel as though these six weights on our shoulders in terms of what we're deciding here, cause it can be changed after we look at this for six months or whatever period we want.
We'd like to make that shorter if you could because we've got two fifties coming up next year.
Yeah.
And we'd want to get this, we would hopefully get this done last year, but with, it's one round and round.
Well, that, it, it, good, I'm glad you brought that, cause that's part of why I was saying, we don't need to, we need to give them the decision to do this so they can stop building it. And, um, and, and, uh, I'm not so worried about giving them a, an appropriate decision timely, uh, because we can change it and we can look at it three months. We, we could actually change it anytime we ever want, is what I'm saying, the, the big deal here, in terms structurally anyways, is, is what's being invested to give us new sidewalks and so on.
Yeah, cause that's, everything outside of that rectangle can, is not the perfect.
We could change it, if those patterns, if whatever pattern we pick doesn't seem to work out, we can change it at whatever time, it won't, wouldn't affect probably anything actually. So, I'm just saying that, cause that came up in discussion earlier today. Diane?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just confused, I want clarification on that, cause like, I, I don't feel prepared to make a decision of going with maybe say.
We're not looking for an answer tonight.
You're going with, should we try the one-way pattern?
Yes.
So that you can start moving in that direction, that's what we can change, but once we decide where we're gonna lay out parking, that's gonna change the engineering of this whole project.
Yes. Yeah. No, but the point being, I think what Kevin's point is, the rectangle's the rectangle, we're gonna put vertical granite curb, that's done, if we ended up, say we just did the parallel parking along the side here, if in the future you said, hey, you know what, we wanna put diagonal pull-in, we're not gonna do anything really extraordinary to that opposite side, we would make it so it would be an, un, a waste of money to do.
Well, the curbing would change from diagonal to parallel?
I'm saying if you, say today you said, I only wanna do this option. Say eventually you said, I wanna do the diagonal pull-in on the side, just because we can and we decided at a later date we wanna get more parking, you could still do that once you're, cause we're not affecting.
Right.
We're dealing with this piece more than this piece type of thing, you know what I mean, like, we'll be resetting curbs, but it's not, if, if you decided to go diagonal pull-in in the future, cause we may, depending upon what you decided to do here, you might wanna do it a little bit nicer than we have funding for at this point too, which then would mean we'd have to go for additional to do.
Well, I, it's my opinion if it's appropriate to voice that at this time, but I think that with the historic commission, what I'm hearing from you is correct. I think that the common looks a lot better with parallel parking along there, I, I just can't imagine that diagonal, that would just be very not consistent with the.
Some smoke with that we got with the diagonal parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see why.
Not just one committee, but I think three or four didn't like the diagonal parking.
I agree.
Especially the chief liked them from back of the car.
Yeah, both chiefs wanted us to do back in par, uh.
They, they have nine years, I think, or something.
That's the most safe kind of parking you can do, just for reference, back in diagonal parking, when you open your doors, it's then facing towards the sidewalk. So, your kids, if they, if you let kids out of the car, they run towards the sidewalk, not towards the street. And if you're taking it out of your truck, trunk, on the sidewalk, not on the street.
But only electric powered segways, that's what I'd go for. I, I have gotten a lot of feedback just in general over the years about making the, a one-way traffic pattern, so I'm not opposed to moving in that direction at all.
So, one, one of the problems is right now, long street is not wide enough for two lanes, two cars to go through and pack on the side.
Right.
You can't, you can't get through that.
Right, right.
So, it ends up as a one-way anyway.
Right.
I mean, it seems like the fourth option proposed, parallel two sides is the best, cause as we know, parking's a huge issue, it's gonna become more of an issue. I'm not even actually sure everyone in the town knows that you're not allowed to parallel park there right now.
Not by behavior, not by behavior.
Cause they will do and we.
I've done it, I admit it, I think it's always kind of in a gray area, but I think that making it more clear where parking's allowed would really help and I just, I mean, I'm, I would be leaning towards that if we had to vote tonight.
I would be too, for the same reasons, and also the fact that it can be changed too and, uh, so.
I would.
I would be inclined to do that and, uh, I'm not, yeah, worried about that. And it allows you to get going too, I want you to get going, yeah, I know you do too, on the other hand, if we feel so we need to wait, we can, but I think the fourth one looks, for the same reasons Carrie's, it looks attractive to me. Uh, Jack?
I would say that aesthetically, um, one side parking and then we preserve our common as the jewel of the center of town that it is. I, I really think that visually it will be far superior and the amount of, um, extra parking spaces that we get, um, isn't that significant?
Is that plan number three?
Yes, proposed par- parallel one side.
This one, yes, you still have it, no, this one is.
This is always day, you could day, time of day restrict too. You could have the ones along the common be.
Proposed on the parallel one side.
Three.
Which side, point your finger the one you like, no, no, put your finger.
You want that one.
You want that one.
The bottom left, right, so, so you have, nobody's parking on the periphery of the actual common.
Bottom one. Yeah, I want the, yeah, cause, you know, especially when we have the art center and all that, it just.
But most of those, but then too, you gotta think, some of those streets get like, if these, Long Road gets shut down for any of them realistically still.
Right.
If it would in the future as well. Uh, but like I was saying too, you could also think about whether you do time of day restrictions on those ones on the edge of the common and say it's only can park there night, nighttime only.
But I think, Jack, on your, uh, recommended proposal, it's not all one-way?
No, it's one-way. My understanding is.
No, that's true.
I could make it one-way.
Right, we could still make it one-way.
Oh, I think it should be one-way.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The preference of, what I've had, the people I've talked to is, uh, proposal powers on the right end, right?
Number four.
Essentially pretty much the same, just parallel parking and no parking on the common itself. Essentially, that's what they do, they pack on the common.
Right.
You don't have to do it anyway, Jack.
But I, I think it.
Oh, 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 the two sides only refers to, uh, Jason, Robert Jason Road and William Long Road.
Right.
But it's still to, 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 to your point, there's still, there's parking then on those short side streets and, you know, it, it's a matter of we lose eleven parking spaces, which, you know, there's a couple nights a week that we need them.
I, I agree.
But, but, I, I, you know, I would just assume not have parking along the common, to be honest with you.
No, I think so.
You know.
The biggest problem is in the, in the mornings when they let their kids off to the schools.
Right.
We've got two schools that, that all the kids off at about eight o'clock in the morning, not everybody at the same time, and I've seen, I've seen them open their doors up before they look on the, on the main street and it's very dangerous there, I'm surprised that we hadn't got you before.
But I don't know that any of those, these are gonna solve bad, bad traffic.
Honestly, you, just, just off the top of my head, you could say, say option, the one you're saying.
Oh, you're not gonna solve it.
Which is, which is this one, right?
Yeah, make, make Robert Jason a one-way in.
Yeah.
Leave this the width it is, two-way, but make both of them outgoing and leave one of them as being a drop-off pickup area for the kids and it could be like a.
You've completely, you've completely lost me.
It just. If you take your, the, the option where William be long, leave it looking like this, but make them both, make it one-way still?
One-way.
Yeah, well, I think that's.
No, but leave it two lanes of traffic so that you would have the ability to have drop-off and pickup.
On that side.
On that side.
On Long, on Long Street.
On Long Road.
And make it a drop-off and pick-off.
Area, not a parking area, but a drop-off and pick-off.
So, I think so.
On the second side, yeah.
So, Jason would go in towards town hall.
Would be one-way, I, I.
And the other one would be one-way out, just like.
Yes, so two, but two, two lanes.
And they would also need a good crosswalk then, so people could drop off and walk over to the schools and churches.
Yes.
Okay, so here comes my unpopular thing, which is I don't like signs and I don't like paint on the ground, um, so, like, what, what legally do we have to do? That's why I don't want.
I'm just throwing something out there as an idea.
Right, like, you know, I don't want, yeah, I don't, um, you know, to the extent that we can avoid, you know, do we have to spray paint parking spaces for every space?
Oh, where's for paint parking spaces? I'm not, I'm just, because these people out here, like, North Main Street, the people out there are very concerned with this. Because if I don't paint those parking spaces, they're gonna get people still parking on their, that area.
On the driveway.
And if I painted a good, that line will denote that you shouldn't be parking on the person's grass anymore, there's now a full parking space for you to park in.
So, on North Main Street, I have less of an issue, I, I, is there any ability on the, on those two, on Jason and Long to?
You could, I mean, you, that, you could, you could do, like Hingham does, the no, they don't do the, they don't do the bars, they just do the rectangle parking.
To be creative about how we do no parking spaces?
They don't do the, here's the actual spots.
Right.
But if, personally, if you don't put the spots, then people will tend to park not where they should and then you end up losing spots as time goes on, because somebody parks
Too far.
In a bad spot and then it propagates through and it's stuck that way for the whole day.
Yeah. I'm super crazy about this and I understand it's not necessarily fits the, the mold of, of, you know, municipality, so, you know, I'll, I won't push, but, yeah.
I understand you, but I, I have no opinion on that, other than it's, you're gonna run into issues.
Like if you're a bird, I, anyway, whatever.
You can pick a different color than white too, if you want to.
That's, some of that stuff out would be great conversation to have, not tonight, thank you.
You can't do that on the center one, we have to, uh, yellow.
Right, that's, right.
Okay.
No, no, I.
Cause Hingham does that and it's illegal.
Right.
They have the red.
The red, white, blue, right, it looks nice, but, like Cohasset Navy or something, you know.
Okay.
So, that is, is the third option, okay, if you take a one-way, Jason going in towards town hall, Long coming out, two lanes, parking only on the outer banks,
Yeah.
nothing on the inner banks.
Yeah, parallel, proposed parallel one side and.
So, a drop-off.
But yeah, but I mean, you wanna park.
Right.
On William Long.
Two lanes coming out on Long.
Yeah.
On William Long, we, he'll, he'll put-
Two lanes out.
A, a drop-off lane.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we call it a drop-off.
And I think it helps too with the farmer's market and whatnot, so that for the food trucks all park, so to leave that a wider paved area, I think is a benefit to the project as well.
Yes. Yeah.
And that would, okay, so I'm sure I had seen it too, so that, this, if we're tending, oh, we're looking that way, one-way down Jason, and then take a left, you go one-way along Highland.
No, Highland will still give you two ways.
Two-way street, gotcha. And then we got a left on William Long, and that'll be one-way with two lanes, yeah, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Then one of them will pick up some parking, and there will be a drop-off where it's ma- I wanna, I wanna make sure it's protective, so that when families, the kids get off there, they can, there's a prob-
We could say, well, we could mark that lane as live parking, let's call it.
Yeah.
It's not parking, but it's live parking.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about going across the street, so it's really marked, but people have to stop if there's anybody in there.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, well, that crosswalk will be well manned as much. Right. But if we make that a live, a live parking, right, lane, so if people are there, you can live park and during-
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And then on North Main Street, both ways, the business is used, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I can live with that. Carrie, is that?
I, I still think forty-three spots would be better than thirty-two without hurting the charm of the, of the town, but I will be fine with thirty-two as well.
I, I think thirty-two is more than we have now.
That's fair.
And I think the, you know, I do think there's a, there's a, a meeting on Monday nights, and I think that's the one night that literally everybody's everywhere on the common.
Right, right, right.
Um, and, you know, I, I keep saying, we, we talk a lot about parking, um, I know we have a shortage of it, but sometimes you have to walk a block to get to wherever you wanna go, and-
And they can always go down to the town lot.
Correct, there is plenty of parking in general for nighttime use.
What? Tell us, Ross, what?
No.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
We could, I mean, that's, if you wanna get to your, your test, if you go with that option, we could technically paint that tomorrow. Or not tomorrow, but now, in this painting thing, because that's, would affect the zero curb line, you could, the way-
And then you can all follow to the point. And, and if we were to have a change of heart a year from now, we could go with Carrie's-
Well, I mean, if you had a change of heart, by the time it's reached the design, you could technically, you know, change your heart, at that point, say. I don't like the fact that we can't park, we need, we need those extra twelve, eleven spaces.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yep.
But Diane can go and paint them off.
In the middle of the night.
Okay, any more, any more discussion on this? Uh, anybody wanna formulate the consensus of the board in a motion, or what do you wanna do?
I'd like to move that we accept-
Make sure you have this carefully, cause we, this is an exact decision.
Proposed parallel number one side, making William Long one-way with an additional drop-off lane, and making Robert Jason Road one-way from North Main to Highland Avenue, and this is consistent with the traffic pattern that we have on voting days.
All you need to do is make the motion. You made the motion, and seconded. Okay, any discussion now, you can elaborate if you wanna.
Sorry.
No.
Yeah. That's, I didn't think so. Anything else?
No.
Okay, motion's made, it's been seconded and thoroughly discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, named, moot, and it's, uh, moved unanimously, Tracy, and again, Jason, congratulations, this is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that you got through the application of, uh, from, uh-
Two fifty-five, yeah.
Two sixty-five.
Two fifty-four, so.
Well, whatever. Congratulations, thank you.
That's, that's all so much that we get with the entire check and items.
I know, yep.
Wow.
So keep, keep, keep applying for those funds.
Yes, we are in the queue every year.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night, thank you for your patience.
All right, next thing is board committee appointment, South Shore Recycling Committee, uh, who do we have for that?
He ran out the door.
I think it was Merle.
We got Merle Brown, he just ran away.
No, we have-
All right, Merle, he left. All right, it's Merle Brown, I think he's been on it for quite some time. Any discussion on this, or anybody wanna make a motion?
I, I think that we appoint Merle Brown to the South Shore Recycling.
Second. You're up, Merle.
Discussion? Uh, Merle was here. Okay, you're in here, we're, we're nominating, uh, you're for the Social Recycling Committee.
You are?
Yeah.
Do you accept the motion?
That's twenty-five years.
There you go.
Do you wanna say anything to the committee relative of that, though, while you're here?
No, but I do want to think about, uh, Mary Snow is on the board, and she's retiring in November.
Okay.
So I'd like to get somebody that's more involved with the transfer station or whatever, that knows what's going on, because they asked me, and I went, here, what you doing? Now, but I'm, I'm the chairman of things, so I just tell everybody what to do.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Good to be the chairman.
Okay, thank you, Merle. Uh, you don't need to stay around to find out if you get, you know, when you, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, named, that's unanimous.
Tracy, was there another application, Mary's submitted an application?
Yep.
Okay.
For what?
For the, the site, for Social Recycling Cooperative? And from what I understand, even though she's retired, and she's interested in staying on.
We, you know, we received, we received an email from Mary Snow that very simply said, I would like to continue as a voting member of the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for the town of Coas.
Cause I was on the OneDrive, so, I mean-
And, and does her term come up at a certain point, or what was Merle just saying?
Where you know she's retired. Where you know she's retired, uh, Mary Snow.
Yeah, we could've, I think she's due to be reappointed tonight as well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, for what period of time is that?
Uh, same as Merle's, I think it's, I think it's just a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so, well, I think she's been there for quite some time, so any just-
So, I'll, I'll move that we appoint Mary Snow to the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for a one-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, named, it's unanimous, Tracy.
And, and just for clarification, the one year is really just the fiscal year, so it'd end on June thirtieth, it's not one year from today.
Yeah.
Um, that's how our terms run.
Okay, next one is Cable Advisory Committee, uh, Board of Directors, Coas at one four three TV, so we have, uh-
So there were three, uh-
Three applications. Yes, please do come on up. There's three spots and three applications, right?
Peter Richardson? Alasha? Okay, I didn't know you were entertained, I just thought Peters today, that's fine. I am gonna share it, so then, all right, then, then we can't make that appointment tonight.
No, 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 it's not, it's, it can be on the agenda, it's not Henry's.
We can't.
Okay, so we have, how many, Chief, or, or Chris, who do we have on this committee here? How many openings and who's applying?
You have three of, at least three vacancies.
We have three vacancies, uh-
And there's two, this is, uh, Cable, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, you have two new committee members?
Responding to the call?
Applicants, we still have to go through the, the approval process.
Right, now, but, but, they, they expressed interest, they, but, but Don, they did their due diligence, and they're sitting in front of a secret, so we're very excited with that.
Okay, so would each of you introduce yourselves, and then say whatever you wish to say about not to feel lonely, participating in this committee?
Sure, uh, John Michael Mash, I've been in, uh, class, and now, my wife and I have moved there about a year and a half. Uh, so she's actually part of the, um, Open Space Committee now. I've been looking to get on a committee for the time I've been here. Um, just kinda waiting to see what you guys needed most, um, this popped up, and I had a conversation with Chris, met with Ron, and, uh, spoke with Nicole. And, uh, just went through the process, and a very nice conversation with, uh, with Ron over at the high school, walked us, walked me through the, the system, and, uh, very curious, very anxious to kind of see that part of, uh, of how this committee operates, and what we can potentially do to, to get the TV, uh, class TV, a little bit more engaged in, uh, in the town.
Great, thank you for coming forward, and nice to meet you. Next, please, Mr. Chris.
Corey Evans, I'm on North Main Street, been here for ten years now. Uh, I speak the technical side of this very well. Um, also fairly familiar with publishing things from my business side, so, uh, would love to help out and try to get one four three TV, have some for a motion, would that be nice? So eager to join up.
Good. Any questions of the app to, to get together before?
I'd like to ask both of you, do you, is there anything in, in your background that makes you particularly interested in this, or that you bring to this, and, and, um, part one of the question, part two, do you have a vision of what you'd like to see Cable Advisory Committee, and be brief, just?
Yeah, so, um, Cable Advisory, well, one, it doesn't really have a vision now, it's kind of, it serves a lot of different masters, um, and that's kind of held it back. Um, so, then, then one that we have to figure out is kind of what it's supposed to be, what this town wants it to be. Um, I'm coming in from, uh, as I said, a technical standpoint, I, I just speak the language of, of the equipment they use, and, and the infrastructure that needs to happen. Um, I'm very familiar with that, and, um, I do a lot of YouTube publishing for my business, so I understand how to make content that is, uh, what it requires to take it, how much time it takes, what people like, um, how to package it up and send it out, um, so, I'm fairly comfortable with all that.
Excellent. Very good.
So, not technical by any means, so, uh, but curious, so, uh, current, my current role in my profession is, uh, negotiations with, um, large, uh, medical device companies, uh, and also for hospitals, and I've also worked with Verizon, um, specifically for telecommunications, and I know the negotiations on, on that side. I know there, you're going through that now with Comcast and Verizon as well, so that might provide some support there. Have no understanding on the technical side of things, but just from a, I live in the village itself, I'm right downtown, so from the standpoint of what the village should look like, what we should be, you know, I look at my, when I hear Cohasset, I think of the village, that's just personally, that, cause I'm there. Um, so, I look at how can we showboat and showcase that, uh, and advance that more in the future, and utilize that, um, that venue for that.
Very good.
Thank you, sure.
Uh, Paul?
Yeah, I want to quick thing, I, I've always thought that having open, uh, cable access and, um, internet access in the downtown area would be ideal, and that's just one consideration for the Cable Advisory Committee, there's a way to potentially get Verizon or Comcast to, um, wire the, the downtown area, so you've got free access for internet access for people, and we haven't filled out the address for it, it's very, Verizon, I think, is a, I guess, but-
You're talking like Wi-Fi hotspot?
Yeah, yeah, Wi-Fi, one giant Wi-Fi hotspot in the downtown area, sure.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
You guys could remember that.
Good luck, yeah. I get to say what I would like.
Talk about my neighborhood, yeah. Yes.
I think it's good for the downtown businesses.
Yeah, thank you for, um, for putting it, putting the name out, and putting it, the effort, thank you.
Yeah.
Any else?
Yeah, just, just, just to say that we got a, um, email from, um, which I forwarded to everybody from Nicole Roth, who's the chair, and has been on the committee for a couple of years, and doing great work. Just, you know, endorsing and anxious to have, um, your, your participation. Um, and there was a third applicant, but I guess the application was just received today, so I don't think it's, nobody's had a chance to review it, so.
So we'll, we'll do two applications, sign them.
Yeah.
Any nominations, why don't we do them individually, show the respective individuality?
I move that we appoint Corey Evans to the, um, Coas at Cable Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, named, that's unanimous, Tracy.
Uh, make a motion that we, uh, appoint John Michael Mash to the, um, Cable Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, Tracy, congratulations, thank you very much, look forward to it.
And, and there's one more action, then I, we, we, we need the board to take, we need to appoint both of them, and Nicole, and David Bigley, to the Board of Directors of one four three TV.
Can we work in with the- Sure.
The board hasn't done that recently, and we need to have all four of them officially appointed, so they can act as a corporation.
You do that?
Yeah.
So, I'm, is it okay if I do it as a group?
Yeah.
Um, so, the, there are now, well, ones who get sworn in, um, I move that we appoint Corey Evans, John Michael Mash, Nicole Roth, and David Bigley to the Board of Directors of one four three TV.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, named, that's unanimous, Tracy. And just one final thing, now that you're appointed to a board, and you may have been told this already, but please go to a clerk's office soon as possible, tomorrow would be good, and introduce yourself, she'll swear you in, if it's appropriate, but she'll also give you a very useful package on how to serve on a committee, and a number of uh, good things that you'll find very, uh, very useful as you enter a committee, so, and you do have to be, um, sworn in anyways, and there'll be a, a test you take on an ethics thing on, you know, internet, and it's all very good and positive, but, uh, if you do that, cause the town has a good amount of support for you there, okay?
Got it.
You're, you're, she's, may not be ready tomorrow morning, you might wanna give us a couple of days, okay? Could you come and pick up the packet?
Thank you.
For Tracy.
When should we come? Friday?
Thursday. Thursday.
Thursday, all right, good.
Great.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start committee. We've been wanting to have that, right? Uh, great to see that. Next one, uh, item on the agenda is the withdrawal of local license. I apologize, apologize, Harbor Committee Recreation Representative, do we have that representative here? Okay, do we have that name?
Jeff Hartwell. Is that Rex's appointment, that we have an email that designated, can I vote that?
So what this is, is the Recreation Committee appoints themselves who they want as a representative on that harbor.
They did the org, they did two switches.
Right, right, and they brought forward the name of Jeff and Hartwell, so, um, we can act on it. Any discussion, or?
I move that we, um, appoint Jeff Hartwell as the Recreation Commission Representative to the Harbor Committee. Diane, can you just, can you turn-
And-
Yep. Do it for a one-year term, to fill, for one year to fill an unexpired term. Thank you, to fill, yep, so just amend my motion to, uh, for a one-year term to fill an unexpired term.
It was in my notes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Tracy. Uh, that motion's been made, has it been seconded?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, named, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, the next item is withdrawal of local license, uh, church mouse, so the applicant, uh, the person can call you that. Um, you got the motions, and, and we have, uh, an email. Just to frame, uh, this here, um, the applicant will then discuss the withdrawal and, and the, and verify these withdrawing, and we'll verify, we have an email and so forth.
Sure.
And so we'll do that, and then after that, um, the applicant wants to present, it was on a fairly quick basis, but we're glad to accommodate it.
There you go, super quick.
And, and what we're doing here tonight, though, is to listen to what, what may be a new concept or something different that the, uh, this particular applicant wants to do. We're essentially just gonna listen to this, may, may, any brief slight questions, but, uh, what we wanna do is hear what it is, give an opportunity for that to be expressed, and then we'll probably give direction as to what the next steps, yeah, will be, which will probably be through working through the town, uh, through Chris and the town, uh, to formulate a proper proposal, which this isn't, and it's not a hearing tonight, um, and auto-effectuated if the applicant, if, if Ryan chooses to do so. So this is really more of a listening type thing at that point there, and we, there won't be any questions from audience or anything like that, this is not a hearing, just so that that's, uh, clear up front. First thing I'd like to, uh, address is though, you wanna withdraw your application, I believe we have an email, and it's not a, I know we've all gotten it.
Yeah.
And you just confirm you wanna withdraw?
Yeah, so, since our last meeting where we were all wonderfully together, and we made a decision, decision to go ahead with church mouse, fortunately, events have happened in between that meeting and now, that have kind of given me moments to pause and realize when, where's the line that's been drawn, where I'm not willing to push forward in this space, you know, and I think that came over clarity last week, um, so the decision is, I would like to withdraw my application without prejudice from twelfth Parking Way, for the idea of a beer garden and a wine bar downstairs. I do think it was a great concept, I still think it's a great concept, it could be one in the future, but for right now, I think it's wise to withdraw. Um, I don't know if that gives, if that fills, if that fills the obligation?
That's sufficient, and we also have that, we also have that in our written email, so we can go ahead and entertain that, uh, as a motion we make on that, so-
So, uh, it's, uh, if you're trying to do this upfront, you know, on board, uh, to reconsider a vote, you know, it would have to be someone who was voted in the affirmative, on the original vote. Uh, I did, and I also was the motion to approve the application to, so I moved to reconsider the vote on June twenty-five, two thousand nineteen, approving an alcohol license for, uh, general on-premises malt and wine license, for the purpose of allowing the application to be thrown without prejudice, and questioned by the applicant. Church Mouse LLC doing business as Church Mouse, subject to the conditions discussed, um.
That's moved, seconded.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, just, just for clarification, so, we're just, in, in this motion, we are just-
Reconsidering the vote, so it's back on the table for the, the, or, accepting vote.
And then we're gonna go ahead and accept the withdrawal, it's gonna be a two-pat step.
So- So we have to reconsider
Correct.
the vote that we previously took, that was the approval of the license.
Yes.
That's right.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Seconded, any of those, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, named, that's unanimous, Tracy, and then the second part will accept it?
Uh, so I move, as I was the, going to move the original-
You could speak up a little bit, some of the people in the audience didn't speak.
Uh, I was the original, um, member to, uh, put forth the original motion, so I'm going to move to approve the withdrawal without prejudice for the application of Church Mouse LLC doing business as Church Mouse for on-premises malt and wine and common victual license.
Seconded.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, that's accepted unanimously, and so, Tracy, that's taken care of. So now on the second portion here, here, just to learn and to listen.
I swear to you real quickly, but can I pass that a little bit?
Anything goes to the clerk first, and she'll pass it to us.
Thank you.
And.
If anybody else would like to take a second, make something to do. So basically, I'm still in love with the idea of doing a wine bar in Cohasset. I think the outpouring of people that have come into Seabird or approached me in private or sent me emails or whatnot to discuss what's going on with it, how much they're excited for it, from the petition of six hundred plus people that wanted it, I do think that there's a place for it in the town, I understand that there's an interpretation by some, and perhaps people are uneasy with the idea of some, a new liquor license being opened in town. So what I'm proposing is, is in, we have the ability to apply for one day liquor licenses, for event licenses, and as was discussed in the first meeting, or we had, I believe Marty Corey brought it up, that in Boston, people apply for thirty one day liquor licenses to open a beer garden. I'd like to see if I can apply for thirty one day liquor licenses, one calendar year, to try church mouse out. I think that kind of gives a limitation to it, so that we know if it doesn't work, we'll finalize, if I apply for liquor licenses, I can say no, run away, I don't have to go through twelve hours of hearings like we did before to get the approval and then have it turned into law, basically. But I think by doing it this way, it'll give, going into this holiday season, a great concept, a chance for, I think, an innovative idea of doing what would be technically a pop-up, so it would be an experiment in a way. But I think it's an experiment that happens all over the place, I mean, you see one day liquor licenses for any event, whether it's on the Greenway in Boston, or if you're going to do an event here in Cohasset, people apply for them, they go well, they join, they can apply for another one, Norwell Farm does one every single weekend in Norwell for the summer. This one, I think, would just be kind of like a test kitchen, if you will, for the idea of church mouse. So what I'm asking you to consider is, I have a show in this package, it would be basically this pared down version of what I originally proposed to you, so instead of doing a large eighteen hundred square foot beer garden outside, this would basically be the preference, one of the proposed locations is where Pintulip is now, I've talked to Christine and Sean Cunningham, we're on board to try something like this in their space, so they gave me basically a three month rent, or lease, sorry, for that space to try this out, we've spoken with some other people in town for other locations. But I think the idea of applying for thirty one day liquor licenses is something that I kind of wanted to bring up for you and see if you had any thoughts, if you had any questions about it, is this something that you would entertain before I go through what we went through before applying for liquor licenses?
Is this essentially the beer garden?
This is more the wine bar. This is basically, if you take the downstairs space that I was.
So it's not a beer garden, what you're talking about?
Not at all.
It's a wine, and some wine and beer.
I'll be serving charcuterie and cheese as well, like I did before. We'd be doing natural wines, I have Josh Cole here, who has an incredible history in restaurants and bar management, who I'm excited to bring in on this project, and one of the reasons I want to continue this is because we have great talented people that would also like to take part in managing this here in Cohasset, and I don't want to give that up, so I would like to maintain bringing more talented people to this town, to help elevate what would be the bar and wine and food scene here in Glassland. So doing so, yes, basically, I'd be doing the basement wine, and there would be beer served, but it wouldn't be a large outdoor area, there would be no pizza kitchen, there would be no beer trailer necessarily, unless you wanted it, then I could definitely put it there. And it would be a casual spot, and basically, we see bird at night, I wouldn't serve garlic.
What about entertainment? What about entertainment? Would that go along with it?
I would just be, just like I do at Seabird, it would be, you know, some son of speakers playing light music, there would be no musicians playing. Again, if you've been to that location, it's got a nice wraparound deck, so there is opportunity to be outside, it is protected by a railing, so I could have potentially outdoor seating with maybe six to eight seats out there, but there would be no live music or nothing.
Okay, questions? So we're not going to get into this depth, but so you can be familiar with it.
You're a trooper, Brian, I know how much you've been through with this, and I will say, just based on comments I've gotten and social media I've seen, I know how much the town still wants a concept like this. That being said, I'm curious what the president is for offering consecutive day liquor licenses like this? Have we ever done anything like this before? Is this something that we have considered before?
And I, yeah, I think with this not being officially noticed, there's only so far we can take this kind of conversation, but I think we do have the ability to issue a special license, and within that, you know, design some parameters, but I think that's something, yeah, that needs to get explored on this end and the other end.
We're not here to do it like that.
Sure.
Because the one day liquor licenses by statute, if I understand it correctly, really get issued to nonprofits, so it would be a special license.
So it'd be, yeah, special license, right.
And special licenses and one day licenses have a lot of responsibility in terms of the alcohol can't show up till that day, so there's a lot of the mechanics that I think, you know, we're going to have to take into consideration, and you're going to have to take into consideration in terms of the kind of application that comes before with us, but I don't want to go too far down there, but I think that the conversation needs to happen.
No. So. No, you're right, you're right, it's a breakdown and a takedown portion of a one day liquor license, it shows up, it has to meet some premises, and it doesn't come back till the next morning, in the world, or second day, for example. So it needs to be set up and broken down within a time period of, you know, the premises, nothing allowed.
But within a special license, I think we have the ability to set some parameters.
So we could, a special license would be different from the one day license he's talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does a special license have a time limit to it? Who the hell, this is talking about.
Well, that's something we could do, like, we could do it, and I'm saying this, I'm not an expert, this is just being at this for eight years and trying to do my homework, I think we can issue a special license for a certain time period, and then within that, you know, set dates that you would be in business operating effectively on a one day, because it's the same parameters of bringing in and bringing out, so, but I don't know the answers, we will have to advise council, you should probably figure out the right application that needs to come before us.
That's what my suggestion is going to be, to avoid it there, is, because this is unusual, is what we should do is, is Brian would need to contact through Chris and whoever is appropriate, and then work through, if you want to, after you've worked with Chris and I and we're handling our liquor regulations and so forth, go through what it is that could be, would be proposed to us that would fit within regulations, however it is. So you may look at whatever that is and say, that's, I don't know if I could do that, I want to do that, whatever it is, because this is unusual, I would, it would be in a totally different posture here if this was, you have a liquor license, move it to a location, off you go. You know, that's more business as type usual, I think, that's just speculating, but this being.
This is unusual.
With its characteristics, yeah, so, but we've listened, we want to listen to it, but you, what we're going to do is direct you to the town manager and to the processes there to work out as you go through the process as to what would be something that could feasibly brought forward to us, then you'll bring that forward to us and we'll take it from there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I've got to say, we really appreciate all the work of Seabird.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I enjoy it, we all enjoy it, so, thank you, Brian, very nice to meet you, Josh.
Can I say a general comment, which is just that I think this begs for continued conversation for us to relook at our liquor regulations, our food truck regulations, I think that's something that, you know, the last couple of months have taught us that it's, you know, there's all these different concepts and ideas for businesses now, and I think we need to make sure we address them at policy level.
And we have, in this, we see a big difference between a one day license, which is just for nonprofit, and a basically almost semi-permit license, and then we have to give them the suitability, and it's generally, I think, a good idea for the applicant to have his application prepared by an attorney, so we don't come back and forth, because we did spend substantial amount of town money evaluating this before, so.
I also spent a substantial amount of money.
I know that.
It's one of the reasons why I wouldn't mind trying to recoup it, it's some idea.
Right, yes, so having an attorney, sometimes, you hate to spend it, but sometimes.
I had three of them.
Thank you very much.
They're not all bad.
No, no, no.
Right, not you, husband, yeah.
One of the other items of a liquor license, I don't believe we have, is there are microbreweries around in the area, yeah, we don't have a brewery and license, and we do not have a distillery license as well in town, so those are other.
Isn't it?
Sure.
You and I have been talking about that for years.
Want to put on a future agenda, a review of our liquor regulations in light of all of this there? So Tracy, could you put that in sometime in January, one of the January meetings, we'll have that discussion? And we have so much, we want to assume, but I mean, I'm.
It's any far away, who wants to?
Oh, yeah, we would have booked, but I mean, we'll start to take that conversation, unless the board wants to do it in December, and. You can't?
No, I mean, it's depending upon what we have available.
Yeah, put it in December, then. And we'll start the discussion, take it from there. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the process of the harbor plan. That Lauren is here?
Good evening.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
And Lauren is a town planner, and we're going to go ahead and, I'll turn over, you to go over the process, I didn't know that Emily from Harriman is going to be here, did you?
She will not be here this evening, it's just me tonight.
So, and I think we have in our package what this plan is, right?
You do, you have a timeline in your process, and I'm going to pass this to Tracy, this is an FAQ that I just received from Emily Imis of Harriman today, so that's held up the press for you. So tonight, I am here to talk about the process of the harbor plan, I'm not here to get into the specifics of it, in fact, I'll get into that in the timeline, but I will be attending your second September meeting with Emily Imis of Harriman to talk about the specifics of that plan. Before we get into the exact timeline, I just would like to go over this, more about the process. So for those who may not be aware, municipal harbor plans, they allow, it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulates development along waterways and filled tidelands, it's underneath a chapter ninety one of Massachusetts general law, so you'll hear a lot of chapter ninety one references when we talk about the municipal harbor plan. A municipal harbor plan allows the town to vary from certain requirements under that chapter ninety one to implement the community's goals. It's a public process, it's being led right now, you're familiar with it, and it allows us to take a look at what we envision for our harbor and put in our own goals, so, but something that's interesting is municipal harbor plans are not a requirement, however, having them is a benefit for communities who adopt them, it allows us to understand community preferences and modify future policies and actions specifically tailored to the community, it allows support for grant applications and funding, and it also opens up communication with state and federal agencies about the needs and preferences of the harbor area. So the Seaport Economic Council provided the grant of eighty thousand dollars, and that was paired with twenty thousand dollars from the town to work on this plan. The town's consultant, as I've mentioned, Emily Imis from Harriman Design, she's right now working on the, another draft revision of this plan. And I'd like to highlight, too, a lot of, there's been some question about whether having the plan in place has legal ramifications. The answer is yes and no, allowing this plan, as I mentioned, gives you the opportunity to deviate from some of the chapter ninety one requirements. So those modifications in chapter ninety one that are included in the state approved harbor plan would be tied to those, but things that are recommendations, goals, and policies, those are not legally tying anybody to anything that the town can choose whether to pursue or not, so.
Similar to our master plan?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, so what's different here, though, is the regulations relative to chapter ninety one, which is the seacoast area, and those, and there's about twelve or fourteen pages of those, those we want to be careful within, which engine law and will be, the town will be committed to that, so I'm going to highlight, because I have something further, I'm going to say on that later.
Right, so with that, I'd like to get into the timeline, I'll keep this relatively brief. Right now, I have been working with Emily from Harriman to talk about the revisions to the plan. We are accepting comments on the latest draft, that's available on the Harbor Committee website, its latest realized date was in July of twenty nineteen, I would request that anybody send those comments to me by the end of the day, this Friday, on the twenty third, so that I will then be able to send those comments to the consultant for inclusion the next revision. The town approval process, we are looking to, I will, actually, as I mentioned, this has been confirmed now, so this has been updated, this is no longer tentative, on September twenty fourth, we will have a presentation before you, Emily will be here to give you information. I will have information to you in advance of that meeting, so that you can start to formulate any questions you might have, so that you can vet that at that time when we have the expert here. And then the process moving forward to that would be an additional public presentation after that date, ideally sometime in October if possible, and then that would ultimately lead to you being able to adopt it. The processes that the board of select needs to vote to approve the plan, to then submit it to the state for approval.
Okay, can I start with you?
Yes.
So on the, after we have had it presented to us, but before we vote on it, I think that the law requires that, isn't that, isn't that the board of selectmen are to have a public forum and get public input?
Yes.
So this here says additional public presentations and harbor committee endorsements, that's going to, just for the board's, my viewing on that is, we're going to hold a hearing, it's going to be our hearing, and we're going to structure that and listen to that as we need to, okay?
That's a hearing as opposed to a public presentation, required by law.
Yeah, it's going to be a hearing held by the board of selectmen, and we'll discuss what that looks like, and where to do it even, we may need to do it at a larger venue, whatever, we'll decide what we'll do, but when it comes, once you start to, we thinking about that? Because that'll be a, that'll be a quick hearing, but it'll be one in which we're going to be at the table, listening to the public. We should get that.
Yes, so once we get to a point where the board of selectmen has approved the plan, then it gets submitted to the state for review. The, it's the Department of Environmental Protection, the approval process there, it needs to get published in the local paper here, that would be on the responsibility of my department, we would take care of that, we would provide a notice to all the persons identified that are required to get this notice, and then it gets published in what's called the environmental monitor, so there is a specific timeline on that, I do, in my understanding, it comes out once a month. So if we were to meet these goals, it would be a tight timeline, if we could submit our plan to DEP by the week of October fourteenth, then they could publish it in their October eighteenth edition of that environmental monitor, and that would open up the public comment period, it would be thirty days from the date of publication, once that closes, there would be a local public hearing that would be put on by the state, the coastal zone management, and Department of Environmental Protection together, that would be sometime between that period, and then there would be consultation with the harbor planning group, which is our harbor committee. DEP would come in and have a conversation with them about the process within sixty days of the close of the public comment period, and if all goes according to plan, we would anticipate hearing back in early February from the secretary about whether or not that was approved at state level.
And during these published periods where they're providing notice, they're taking public, they get public comments, and that's the point?
Yes, yes.
That they'll address them, and when it says responsibility on town, now, who is it that's holding these hearings? Because there's one hearing we're holding.
Yes.
We're holding, who says town here, who's supposed to under the law hold these hearings and to what purpose?
So it actually would be the state agency, but they would hold it in a local, we would assist them with the notification of that.
Okay, but those are state hearings, so this, when it says responsibility, it really shouldn't say town, it should say state.
Which, for which?
Underneath DEP approval process, you've got town, town, town.
Yes, yes, the publishing of, in the local paper of the notice, that would be my responsibility to get the information from the state agency and make sure that it was posted appropriately.
Okay, where is it?
The hearing is below, it's C E M and D E P.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's a local public hearing, that's, who's, C E M?
Coastal Zone Management.
So that's not our responsibility?
Correct.
They had to come in, yeah, and so the only meeting or hearing we're responsible for is the one that we're holding.
Correct, and the thought process was that, given the nature of this, there are, there's a lot of regulations, a lot to digest, we thought it would be beneficial to get in front of you prior to that public meeting, to allow opportunity to vet questions and have you start to really understand it, I know there's a lot of material there, so that's why we wanted to get before you in September.
Yeah, okay. One thing that I'm going to want to have done, and the board can nod okay if you don't want to, I don't know if Paul's here, the town attorney, was mentioning this process to him, and in this initial report here, I don't know, Paul, do you have a, do you ever have a copy of this sent to you by Lauren yet or not? This is the sound of the harbor. This is the town of the harbor, this time.
I have the town, the timeline, and that's pretty much from, from the scene of the.
You don't have the report itself, right?
I don't have, I have a report, and I don't have the actual harbor master plan. It's the first I heard was posted online, so I'm going to find it online and I'm gonna read it.
Is it the latest one? It's online, obviously. Okay, I'm talking to the board here, this is what we plan, I could do. It says, he's our town attorney, and there are twelve pages, as we know, of chapter ninety-one regulations, which we just discussed, we committed to. So, we need to look at, one way that'll speed this process up and also make us better informed is if we have an expert on ours, of ours, look at that. So, I'm gonna ask with the board's approval, is, is I'm gonna have Paul gonna go ahead and, you can access it online, or Lauren can send it to him. But those twelve pages, or whatever they are, I don't know the exact number, all the ones that talk about chapter ninety-one legal changes, want an attorney to re, our attorney to read that and provide the Board of Selectmen three, four, five pages, clear English, as to what that, as to what those changes represent and what they mean. And then, we will then have that and be able to make our decisions. I think things will go faster, and we need to be informed, and a good report like that, if we want, we can even share it, the public can see what it is too. I think that's the proper way to go. Now, in chatting with, quickly in chatting with Mr. Duransus, he's our town council, so we get that analysis for free.
Right.
We get a shot at that for free. So, I think we should take him up on that, and I've also openly said to Duransus, because the importance of this, if we feel as though when we look at that, let's gonna get another opinion that we pay for, we could decide on that as a board, so that we can be fully informed, one, and we'll be, we'll move quicker on that. So, if that process is okay with the board, that's what's gonna.
One question I have, and that would include reading the rest of the harbor plan to see how it integrates.
You just said what the board wants.
Yeah, I would say, you know, 'cause otherwise you're kinda walking with one leg.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, I would imagine a good lawyer would read the entire document.
Well, I guess so.
What we're really concerned about is just understanding some of the legal ramifications.
Yeah, exactly. And how it works, and how it works together with the various things that the Harbor Committee is suggesting, yeah.
That's a very good input, Paul, a part of our stuff, you'll do, read the whole thing, but I wanna emphasize again what we want, which is a cogent report on all the legalese is exactly what it means. Once you have that done, let me know, Chris and I know, 'cause we're gonna put you on the next agenda. You can come to the Board of Selectmen, and he'll review that with us, and this'll be part of our diligence of making ourselves informed, okay? Irrespective of any other meetings, we're gonna have that done that way, okay? And when he's ready, it's ready.
So, my only comment would be, if, I would love to get this analysis while in advance of the meeting on the twenty-fourth, because if that's the meeting where we're gonna really be substantively talking about the harbor plan, I think we need to have that analysis for that meeting, and maybe if it's possible to get it at our first meeting in September, great. But if not, we might wanna think about getting that presentation sometime before the meeting on the twenty-fourth, when we're bringing Emily in, so that we have the right questions. It doesn't seem, you know.
I agree with that, that's the way we'll proceed. I do wanna say that my view is, is this is good, the timetable, but we're not gonna, I don't want us to be rushed on this. We'll make these decisions when we're ready to do it.
So, what?
And what we're setting up will allow us to go faster, but better, but still, I don't wanna be, I don't want us as a board to be pushed, 'cause we have a responsibility, this entire town, to make sure this is right, we're setting some stuff in stone here.
And I think we also need to, the developers are part and parcel of this whole plan. They've worked very closely, so I think we, at what point are we gonna get actual, specific input from the developers into all this? 'Cause we don't have that at this point. And I know that's gonna be on the master plan, we're gonna discuss shortly.
I'm not quite sure what you mean there, you mean what their view?
Yeah, what's with the actual implementation, and I think.
I think actually, that seems a little bit separate to me, in that right now, right now, what we're, unless I'm missing something.
I agree.
We're working as a board here, but this is our harbor plan, and these are regulations, I wanna know how this affects anything. When it comes to anybody who's doing any development, I think their next stop is the planning board, unless I'm missing something, Chris?
Right, because that's, I think we're gonna discuss that in, in context of the master plan.
Well, we can, addressing it as it affects here, that's the way we're going.
Right, yes.
But let's not get, we have people who are actively developing, but we're not, that isn't what we're addressing. We're addressing on an overriding structure, unless I'm missing something?
No, yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, you know, the harbor plan, as we said earlier, is, just like the master plan, it, you know, has been up on the website and is available when there've been public meetings, and people can make public comments, whoever they are.
Yeah, definitely, and I agree with that. The big thing that's different on the harbor plan is we have a heightened responsibility here. The master plan is approved by the planning board. That's not our purview, but this here is our responsibility, that's why I'm being extra, you know, which right off, you've all said to me, we wanna be extra careful. Okay, anything else on, Paul, is that clear, what we need you to do, and when you can do it? And keep Chris and I posted as to how that analysis is going, any questions or whatever you need to do it? I think you can access Lauren, or whatever you need, okay? 'Cause we want this to be a good report, again, we'll have another one done if we don't want, I don't like it for some reason, but I'd like this to be done thorough and properly, it's important to us, okay? And you heard everything we said here tonight? Lauren? Lauren, do you have any else?
That's all for now.
Uh, thank you very much. We're glad you would see in a while.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll see you in a few minutes.
See you in a few minutes. Okay, uh, okay. Next thing on the item is a master plan presentation with the planning board. And with that, I'll recognize Claude Brewer.
Claude Brewer, sure, the planning board. Uh, thank you for, uh, Patrick Kennedy, uh, vice chairman of the master plan committee. We also have Amy Glassmeyer, Charlie Higginson, and Lauren's been doing a great job picking up the coordination effort on the various plans that we have that are being completed and are, are completed. Uh, again, thank you for inviting us.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work this committee's done. We'll be all thanking you probably for the evenings, although, but it's been two-year effort, and thank you very much. We've been looking forward for some time to see this evening.
The purpose of coming tonight especially is a community outreach, to be able to introduce the master plan that's now been adopted by the planning board to the community, to point out, as Diane did, that the, the master plan is on the, on the website, and then ultimately talk about next steps. Lauren has drafted a, an implementation committee charter, which I think is, you know, we can talk about that at the end of this, at the end of this review. Any questions that people in the community have, or in particular tonight, the selectmen have about the master plan, and we welcome them? And we talked about a format similar to what we did for the presentation with the planning board. And I think it probably makes sense to, to read the vision statement and then go through, go through the, the key findings or the key recommendations and goals by section. That won't take too much time, but I think what it does is it sort of broadly brushes a, an understanding of all the major subjects that are in the plan and how they're related in some ways, and, and what the kind of next steps for the town. This is an exciting time, I think, for Cohasset planning, with an enthusiastic new town planner and, and the first master plan, I think, to be adopted.
Ever since.
Thirty years?
Ever.
Some time, yeah.
There was a Benjamin report that was like a master plan from the sixties, but being like a, a master plan and being a master plan are, are different things. As you said, we, we've actually been working on this master plan effort for four years. We did a phase one. Chris gave us support for getting funding for phase one, which was community outreach, working with MAPC, sending out surveys, getting results, and then identifying key strengths, key challenges for the, this next phase, which has been a two-year effort. And the committee has been, I'd like to say tireless, 'cause, but everybody gets tired. We've been working steadily over the last two years, making progress. The first, the first part, before we even had the consultant on board, the committee basically got saturated with the information that was available, the two thousand four draft plan, the, the key findings from the phase one of the master plan, and any other related information, like the open space plan that was in progress at the time.
Recent peer master plans from other towns, for example, we spent a lot of time looking at.
That's right, so, before we even had a consultant on board, we kinda worked thoroughly as a group, and I say each individual member of the master plan committee brought their own strengths and enthusiasm to the task, which is great, to have a good diverse bunch of people that are dedicated to the future of Cohasset, which is what a master plan's all about, trying to chart a course for making changes for the future of the town. So, I don't know if you have any questions right now, I can, I can go ahead and read the, the vision statement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's 'cause the people at home wanna hear.
Okay, so, the Cohasset community vision. Cohasset's master plan envisions a vibrant and engaged community. Cohasset is a unique seaside community known for its panoramic beauty, plentiful open space, natural resources, and a firm commitment to providing a high quality of life to all its residents. As depicted in the town seal, the master plan fosters stewardship of Cohasset's core assets, coastline and topography, town governance, community and education, and our New England heritage. By harnessing these core assets and working with mutual respect, the master plan seeks to preserve and promote the ideals that are most highly valued by our community.
Great.
That took us four months.
That was, that was, and Kevin was crucial to turning our, our town seal as a concept into a real vision statement, and I thought it was an excellent kind of combination of graphic and ideals, a way to approach that very important first step.
Making the past into the present.
He managed to insert himself in the picture.
I know, it's.
No harm done.
Patrick, thank you for pointing that out. Saved me the trouble.
The poor guy's always in the shadows, so he notices you.
So, the next step, we wanna go through the master plan goals, and I'm gonna read this introduction. In light of the public input from the community, the analysis of the past and current economic, housing, natural resources, infrastructure, and land use trends and needs, the master plan sets out the following goals for each chapter of the plan. These goals drive the specific strategies and action items that are designed to implement the plan. And for the planning board presentation, we, to the extent possible, we had whoever the team leader of each section read their section. I think that worked well, I'd like to do that again, even though we, we're missing a few master plan committee members. First item is land use goals, that Patrick was team leader. So, these goals were, in phase one of the master plan process, citizens of Cohasset identified several opportunities, including developing a land use plan before the town is overdeveloped, increasing affordable housing for people with lower incomes, and retaining the traditional small-town feeling of Cohasset. Goal one, plan and invest strategically for smart growth in order to preserve Cohasset's community character. Goal two, revitalize the harbor area in accordance with the harbor plan vision, we've heard about that tonight. Landside development and infrastructure recommendations. Goal three, protect open space in all town-wide land use decisions in order to preserve access and scenic beauty in accordance with the open space and recreation plan. Goal four was to attract and retain diverse business in Cohasset while retaining small-town character. Great. Next section is the housing goals. Team leader was Peter Hobson, I don't believe he made it tonight, so I'll read that one. The analysis of housing needs and development constraints, as well as input from public forums, indicate the need for more housing options in Cohasset, whether they be increased affordability, additional rental opportunities, more housing appropriate for smaller households, or more options for seniors. These goals will position the town to best address these needs in a way that complements its unique character. Goal one, diversify Cohasset's housing stock and promote increased options for households of various sizes, incomes, tenures, and ages. Goal two, increase the supply of deed-restricted affordable housing qualified for the state subsidized housing inventory. And that's the forty B compliance. Goal three, support seniors as they age and provide housing options that will enable them to live and thrive in Cohasset. Next chapter is economic development goals. Amy Glassmeyer was team leader for that. Amy, do you?
Can you read that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So, the first I'll do is read the key findings, and then I'll read the goals, 'cause the goals are very short. And it is prefaced by a statement that refers to the last thirty years, and it mentions the fact that over the last thirty years, growth along the three-eight corridor and in the surrounding communities, combined with the advent of internet sales and delivery, have diminished the town's commercial retail center. At public meetings accompanying the master plan process, residents expressed a strong desire to see investment made by the town and private businesses to increase opportunities to experience living in a well-resourced and vibrant small town. Key findings, Cohasset has a modest local economy and a low job-to-resident ratio, which means most people who work, not live here. Less than fifteen percent of people who work in town live in Cohasset, and most people commute to Boston for employment. The town primarily relies upon property taxes, and only a small share of total tax value comes from commercial, industrial, and personal property funds. To build a stronger economy, the community needs to effectively communicate the virtues of the town as a whole and shape the story to in line, to, to be in line with the town's collective aspirations. To appeal to potential developers and business, Cohasset has to be made visible, its history has to be made legible, and its story needs to be made clear. Growing the town's economy is a strong desire expressed by residents. Revitalizing the town's economic development committee is critical to enhancing the availability of goods and services, as well as entertainment options for families and visitors. Linking the production of affordable housing within the walking distance of the village will help boost demand for goods and services while providing ease of access for residents, especially the elderly. Improving the visibility of the town's many attractive qualities includes its historic village, common, harbor, and coastline wires connecting to economic development resources and organizations around the state and by expanding the variety of business opportunities for local residents. And then our goals are, and. Create a variety of economic activities in town to satisfy citizens' desires for more varied experiences. To reimagine the town's engagement with economic development, there was a previous economic development function, but it's the, it's gone dormant, and we need to reactivate it. We need to strengthen traditional economic development organizations, including the Cohasset Chamber of Commerce and Local Downtown Business Association. We need to increase the number of visitors traveling to Cohasset for enjoyment and use the town's resources. We need to implement the economic development recommendations of the master plan and the harbor plan in unison. That's it.
Uh, thank you, Amy. Let's see, next up is historical and cultural resources and goals. Katie Dugan couldn't make it tonight. Patrick, could you help me, could you help me in, in share some of the, some of the?
Highlighting the objects and goals of the master plan of this area were to document the town's historic properties, which has created interest in preserving them, documentation of them has created interest in preserving them. Furthermore, the historic consistency of the built environment may be maintained through the enactment of regu, of increased regulatory guidelines that include design standards. More programs can be developed by the Historical Society, the Historical Commission, and the Cohasset Common Historic District Commission to connect town residents who are interested in preserving the historic character of their homes with information and coordinated planning efforts to celebrate the town's rich history and cultural heritage. Goal one, preserve the historic residential character of Cohasset. Goal two, develop additional local capacity to manage and enhance historic and cultural resources. Goal three, enhance Cohasset's historic and cultural resources. Goal four, enhance creative and cultural economic development. Great, thanks, Patrick. Let's see, next one is open space and recreation goals. Cohasset recently completed an update to their open space and recreation plan. The OSRP provides a comprehensive overview of the town's natural history, a detailed inventory of all open space and recreational resources in Cohasset, and recommendations for protecting and approving these resources.
and recommendations for protecting and approving these resources. During the public input process for both the OSRP and the master plan, the residents of Cohasset expressed concern about the encroachment of new development on the scenic vistas and character of the town and its quality of life. Goal one, make protection of open space and the character of the town a priority in all town-wide land use decisions in keeping with citizens' wishes to preserve access and scenic beauty. Goal two, protect and maintain the natural environment. That's a big one. Goal three, improve recreational opportunity and access. The next is, actually I was team leader for transportation and circulation goals. So I'll read that one. Cohasset residents want to think creatively and holistically about the town's transportation network, creating a multi-pronged strategy, both to address major concerns and to improve Cohasset's quality of life. Improving pedestrian and bicycle connectivity enhances safety, positively impacts economic development in commercial areas, and reduces congestion. But Cohasset deals with typical issues related to maintaining and operating its roadways, parking lots, as other communities. It also has a high number of private roadways. Okay, goal one, improve pedestrian connectivity throughout the town. Goal two, improve bicycle access and safety. Goal three, improve how roadways in town operate.
What does that mean?
I think it's vague enough to mean anything to just about anyone, but the roadways in particular.
Wrong answer.
I was going to say good answer.
The private way policy, the connectivity of three A and the three A corridor issues, how decisions are made with regard to upgrading and improving roads throughout the town on an annual basis. Those were some of the issues.
Those were the main. The next is public facilities and services goals, and Kevin, you were the, you were the team leader. Don't mind.
Oh, not a problem. Public facilities and service goals. Regular assessment of and investment in the town of Cohasset's physical facilities are required to support the efficient operation of the staff who rely on them and their use as community resources. Efforts to maintain and improve Cohasset's public facilities should continue to be guided by well-developed capital planning and budgeting processes which identify future needs as well as wants, while offering a framework to evaluate individual priorities in the context of town-wide planning activities. Effective service delivery relies on the availability and provision of operational resources, such as sufficient funding, personnel, and access to appropriate workspace. Effective communication and transparent working relationships between town departments, boards, committees, and the broader public is important in achieving these goals. So we have four main goals to focus on underneath this, in this section for the implementation. And the first is ensure Cohasset's public infrastructure and facilities meet community and departmental needs. Second, secure and supply adequate resources to provide high-quality facilities, services, and programs that serve the needs of Cohasset's residents. Third, enhance communication and improve transparency of town processes. Fourth, explore collaborative solutions to address regional issues facing the town of Cohasset and neighboring communities.
Thank you. Let's see, second to last is energy and sustainability goals. That was Eric Seuss, and I did, have not seen him tonight, Charlie. What's that?
Charlie's here.
Char, Charlie, do you want to read the, this section?
I'll read it.
All right.
I did not work on this.
You've been here all night.
I realize that. I realize they're shy.
There are many opportunities for residents, businesses, and the town to reduce their use of energy, including electricity, heating oil, and natural gas and gasoline. The goals focus on reduction in energy use, switching to cleaner sources of energy, and increasing resiliency in the face of the changing climate, while taking advantage of existing state programs and incentives. Goal one, reduce municipal energy use. Goal two, reduce residential and commercial energy use. Goal three, prepare for climate change and increase town resiliency. Goal four, promote the use of additional renewable energy to reduce emissions and costs. Goal five, reduce vehicle fuel use, support transition to electrical vehicles, EVs. Comment on the latter, we didn't really get into what automated driving effect, or that's too far in the future for this master plan.
Yeah, the autonomous driving impact, autonomous driving vehicles impact is, is coming.
But you've raised quite.
Leave that to Carrie.
So I think the last one was mine, the public health goals. I guess one thing, you know, Cohasset's a pretty healthy town, but we looked at how we can make better. Current conditions suggest that the town of Cohasset residents experience physical, social, and mental health outcomes that are equal to or better than the average of the Commonwealth. The town's economic, housing, and environmental conditions support the beneficial outcomes and represent conditions that are supportive of wellness. While residents of the town generally enjoy better health, there are actions that Cohasset can undertake to prevent future threats to the health of residents and help all enjoy greater well-being. Goal one, sustain and expand access to locally-produced and healthy foods in town. Goal two, sustain support for actions to monitor and respond to issues related to the mental and emotional wellness of residents, particularly those of youth and older adults. Goal three, prioritize active transportation, walking, biking, and transit use in open space access to promote physical activity and exposure to outdoor natural environments. Goal four, address environmental hazards to reduce resident exposure to substances that reduce the quality of life in town. Goal five, assess potential health impacts of proposed projects and policies by integrating your health and equity lens into your local decision-making.
Thank you, Paul. And before we get into a discussion in the implementation, I'd like to check in with our town planner. Did you have anything that you wanted to add about what you found coming in to the almost completed plan? In, in terms of next steps and?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to, one, thank the committee members who put in all this time and work and effort. This is, it's a really great plan, and I think it's reflected in such that the four Board of Selectmen goals for fiscal year twenty are all identified in the master plan. It's coherent. So what I'd like to stress is the importance of making sure that this time and effort doesn't just go and sit on a shelf, and that's where implementation comes in, and making sure that we're, we're actively trying to address the things that are identified in this plan, using this as a, as a vision for our long-term development and growth and moving forward.
Great, thank you. And in terms of the implementation approach, there's an implementation matrix in the back of the master plan. And, and what it does is identifies these, these goals and expands strategies, identifying parties responsible, timeline, and potential resources. So I, I really think that the implementation committee will be identifying the low-hanging fruit, the things that are easy to do and implement right away, and the critical items that need action right away that may be not long, low-hanging fruit. They may be quite complicated, but they need to be tackled immediately. And then, and then, and then everything in between.
That implementation section is in itself a fifteen-page document. It's pretty dense with bullet points, single-spaced charts, graphically depicting sort of an order of potential targets in each of the different subject areas.
That's right. Are there any general, general or specific questions at this point?
Okay, if there isn't on the board, I wouldn't mind if there's anybody in the public who asks any questions or anything because of the nature and importance of the master plan. Is there anybody in the, if there isn't anybody on the board first, just to waken things up a little bit.
One thing, I will just say one thing, which is just a comment. I, I don't know if there is a plan, because I don't have the implementation layout in front of me, but, thank you. But is there a plan to have this, this discussion at a public meeting? Because I would love to, when I was, I wasn't here for our executive session earlier, and I was out in the hallway with probably fifteen people waiting for the door to open up, and there was a lot of discussion just about economic development in literally almost everything that we've talked about just in general. I'd love to see more of this. I'd love to see less of that. How are we dealing with this? How are we dealing with that? And, and it's, most of it's here.
Right. What I'd suggest is, we're going to address next the implementation plan and the committee and so forth, that that be something that we have, that they do, because that'll be a good way for them to get going and get into this. And we want to have a robust implementation of this, which we're about to discuss, so that's a good segue. But I think that's something that would be great for them to do, and we should definitely, could definitely all be in attendance at it. But I think we need to get the ball over to a robust implementing committee and let them go with it. So I think, yes, we should do it, but that's the committee, the committee should do it.
Something like a forum that has specific topics, and then how things are working well, and how things are working poorly, and everything in between.
Yeah, and what we want the focus, though, to be is on is implementation now, because we don't want this to become another meeting like, you know, which is all great for the sake, but I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to get right into the implementation, so I guess so.
If I understand what Kevin is saying, is you're, you're suggesting that this implementation committee charge include public outreach.
Oh, yeah.
Add, add that to this right now, because I don't think it specifically addresses that right now.
And, and another thing that we have to deal with, and the town planners trying to get our arms around it, is, is the, the, how all these different plans that we have are working together and kind of like informing each other for good municipal decision-making.
That's what we're about to do. We're going to discuss that in a few moments, and that's an extremely important thing we're going to do tonight, I believe, if we get it done.
One, one specific question, which is on the, the section on public health. The Board of Health came before us a couple of weeks ago during public comment period and requested that we consider, or we look into how to change their name potentially to the Board of Public Health as opposed to. Was that something that came up in the master plan process, or, you know, were they engaged at, at that level?
Well, I don't recall that.
Was that just kind of off?
Input.
That just kind of came from their?
Much more recently, because I think someone had looked at other towns and pretty often.
Not that they do.
Public health, you know, it's, it's named at the state level.
Yeah.
Well, what's interesting is these plans, they, we, we just, we work them out, and there's a, a line in the sand where the plan is done, and then there's next steps. But life keeps changing for people in Cohasset. Everything keeps changing. The realities, economics, change, and we want to make sure that, like with the implementation committee, that we're, we're working expeditiously to, to implement things that make sense and, and have a system in place that, that deals with the realities of change since each, each of these plans gets, gets committed to, so to speak.
That'll be part of the iteration process between the implementation committee and ourselves, because we can make those modifications as needed, but yes, we definitely need to do that. Anything else?
I don't know. Does, does the Board of Selectmen want to decide now on the implementation?
We're going to go, covering that right next. We're going to set up an implementation committee and get going on this, because you might want to stay for this, because it's never been done before.
Charlie, do you see my chair, Lauren?
I had two points that I'd like to emphasize. One was that we might consider a town-wide speed limit like Situate has, and that would be Board of Selectmen and the police department. And two, we might consider ways in which we can enforce the Massachusetts rules on the noise of vehicles passing through the town. At the moment, on a weekend on Atlantic Avenue, you can't hear yourself think.
We just heard.
Again, that would be the Board's selectmen at least. I talked to the chief, he was about to, the latter, and he's interested, but he isn't, but you're out of your force.
Okay, two things. One, we did look at the speed limits before, but we could look at it again. So in response to that, we could ask Chris to talk to the police chief on both these subjects again, and maybe bring to us what's appropriate and to address what Charlie's bringing up. Okay?
I'll, Chris, I'd be glad to participate in that.
Okay, Charlie, that's the way it was. Okay, the next, and, and important thing here, and we want to frame this, because, you know, usually these plans don't get complete. To say nothing about, we've actually, you know, had a plan that's gone through a very professional and rigorous process, and we have now a complete plan. So since they really ever get completed, you can see they really ever get implemented, and it's almost a town-wide joke, but we're not the only community. So, and what we have, going to have proposed here, and for us to look at and go over and make, and, and get going on, is as an implementation committee, and the idea is for this to be robust, be meaningful, and something that really gets done. So I have a couple of comments I know I want to make, and that I think will improve something that I want to make on this plan. But do you want to make some comments first, and I'll give, I'm going to give a couple of suggestions?
Sure. So just to get some background to the broader public, the, as we've discussed, the master plan's been adopted, and now we're looking to implement that. Particularly for Cohasset, we have multiple different kinds of plans going on right now. So what I'm looking at the master plan implementation committee in my proposal to you is kind of as an umbrella organization across a variety of planning initiatives, which includes to promote and guide implementation of the master plan, the municipal harbor plan, and the open space and recreation plan. Coordinating the implementation with these various long-bridge planning initiatives, I think is very important, that we're making sure that things are happening in concert and not in silos, so that we're not duplicating efforts and that things are coordinated and nothing in competition with one another. This committee charge that I prepared for you, I'm suggesting it's comprised of seven members, residents. That would include representation from the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Open Space and Recreation Committee, and the Harbor Committee, as well as three citizens at large. I would suggest that they would have expertise in a field such as planning, architecture, economic development, real estate, some sort of relevant field that would dovetail nicely with what we're looking to do here. The couple of things that I have here are, the MPIC, as we'll call it, would be responsible for providing overall guidance and coordination across the plans, particularly when they involve multiple boards and responsible parties. Recommending to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board the actions necessary to implement those plans, including timing, resources, and responsibilities. I'd like to highlight here that we only have so much bandwidth in town. We are a small community, so there will be opportunities that we, you know, would seek to bring in, for example, a consultant with a particular field of expertise that could, that could lend useful to what we're trying to do. Also, the MPIC will develop timetables for various projects and activities, considering the priorities that have initially been identified in these plans. They would periodically evaluate the continued relevance of the major recommendations, advising the town on whether they should continue to pursue that, or revising due to economic, demographic, or other changing conditions. Would provide an annual status report to the town with respect to the progress in implementing, implementing those plans, meeting internally and communicating with all the active boards and commissions with enough frequency to remain, these documents are living documents. Again, we don't want them to die on a dusty shelf. And then this suggestion is that, that it would exist within ten years from the date of establishment. That term can be extended by a vote, but at the end of ten years, they shall report to the Board of Selectmen its recommendations as to whether the master plan should be updated.
Okay. You have time to hear, any comments for that?
Yes.
So I'm going to go ahead and, there's a couple of things I think that can really make this even more robust, and we want to do that. And that is, is I'm going to suggest to the committee that on, that we have as a chair, that we appoint as the chair of this committee whoever's the director of planning. And the reason for that is, is that'll put the resources of the town in terms of an organizational capability and, and give a real robustness to, to a professional leadership. And a lot of times in committees, you know, it just doesn't get done, especially, it doesn't get done professionally as perhaps it might be able to be. But this puts the organizational skill of the town, abilities of the town, so that that person is, is, is chairing it, and, and that person, of course, reports indirectly to us through the town manager, so we'll have an ongoing hand on it. It'll give robust leadership, someone who always sees and coordinates, and is a real professional, you know. Now, then the caveat on that that'll ameliorate some concern perhaps is, is that, that'll be non-voting. So that'll be, that'll be the chairman, and so we're putting a robust structure of what, in resource, what the town can have as a professional, but, but they're, they're non-voting, and all the votes that this committee make are citizens. So that combines both, and would make, I think, for a good, a good committee that has a chance of really getting a lot done, or getting something. So that combines both and would make, I think, for a good, a, a good committee that has a chance of really getting a lot done, or getting something done.
So making like an ex officio chairman?
Yeah, the chairman will be automatically the planning, they don't vote, they're ex officio, and then all votes are citizens. And that's, really puts the, combines the best of all worlds.
What is the, the, this would be a town committee appointed, subject to open meeting.
Selectmen committee.
Selectmen committee. And do we need, can we establish it as, as selectmen? We don't have to go to town meeting for?
Yes. See, we're in, we're in cha- we're gonna take the bow by the horn and get this implemented and we'll make a robust committee, which has never been done before and actually have, get, and whereby having a professional on the top, we can set the goals, we got people.
And the members would be appointed town officials, subject to open meeting, et cetera, and so on?
All citizens, any vote. Yeah, it's all open meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Kevin, I think it's a great idea to have, uh, Town Planner as, as the chair of this implementation committee. Because Town Planner understands from mo- many multi-different levels what's going on regionally, what's going on, um, with the town, connected with, uh, town government in a way that, um, a committee meeting once or twice a month, uh, isn't, uh, volunteers, isn't connected in. And what, what I find is, working with professionals is, th- there's a way to cut through the BS to, to focus and not waste time and, and focus on, on the goal of getting things done. Committee, uh, volunteer committees are great, uh, you know, it powers this town, but, um, I think it's a great suggestion.
Great to see if this kind of structure, the effects and what it can produce may be a great, a great exper- great thing for us to try.
Excuse me, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this, as you know, and I'm glad Paul Durensis is in the audience, because in our bylaws, um, it, it says each board, commission or committee shall annually elect a chairman from its membership. So, this is a committee that, I mean, we have the power to raise committees.
I think the question that Paul is, is how, can this be, how can this be, can this be done the way I just described it? Or can we, can we appoint the Town Planner, non-voting member of this committee?
Or, and can we call this something other than a committee and therefore?
That was it, my question, why one, by, from what this lives.
Make the exception to the laws.
So what is it, let's see what Paul says.
It's gonna be a committee by definition of a committee under the open meeting law.
Right.
So it's gonna have to be a committee.
Okay.
And yes, it has to annually elect a chairman, but it can annually elect the Town Planner as the chairman.
But it says from amongst its membership.
I thought you were gonna make her a member of the committee.
Okay. So not ex officio, no?
No, no.
But are, are no committee members have to be residents of the town of Cohasset?
But she's not a bit. Right, but she, right, cause we can only appoint residents to the committee.
I didn't see that in the definition of this committee.
That's the definition of all committees by our bylaws.
Right. We ran into that with, uh, the lobster.
Every time there's a ability to appoint committees that do not consist of entirely around residents. Do I have to look at the bylaws? There's a bylaw that prohibits a committee that have a non-resident?
I believe.
My understanding is it requires that you are a member, that you are a citizen to be a member of a committee.
Yeah, the bylaws are there, so.
However, since she's non-voting, could we not have a committee having a, um, executive director as part of that committee, she's not voting anyway. So the committee would be given the use of our Town Planner? Can we incorporate that?
Well, let's see if we can do it the other way first, then, cause it's cleaner of.
Okay.
Well, the document in front of you says that this will be seven Cohasset residents. The committee consists of seven Cohasset residents.
Okay, we can change it though.
Yeah, that's just a draft for us to discuss is in terms of how we're gonna structure this committee. But I, I just don't, I wanna be mindful of some of the limitations our bylaws provide.
How about this?
The, the. Look at the bylaws and answer the question.
How about, okay, just throwing, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm thinking they, they directly, uh, report to the Town Planner and then to the Board of Selectmen.
I was just gonna say something similar that.
Yeah.
How about if we structured this as the, the committee would consist of an executive director appointed by the Selectmen, that could be in, and then we appoint the Town Planner and seven members and no chairman, no, no, no other members perhaps, I'm just.
Yeah, right.
Just, just two things from, on the bylaws. One is that the committees do need to elect among their membership a chairman. So that chair could be, you know, report through.
Who has no, who has no powers?
Right, right, I mean, that, but it does say that in, uh, um, all, members of boards.
Excuse me, does that say could or must?
All members of boards and committees, first of all, shall be registered voters of the town.
Okay.
And be sworn in. And then in terms of the chairmanship, it says each board, commission or committee shall annually elect a chairman from its membership, and the membership is required to be registered voters. So, don't wanna get all kooky, cause I agree in principle with the, the idea.
Yeah, but there's. But there's no reason why that, I, I'm not sure that, that chairman is, I don't think it's gonna be an issue in the actual operations.
Yeah.
But if you, if you have a chair, excuse me, if you have a chair from the committee, um, it might just be a matter of making sure that, uh, the rules are followed when voting on anything.
Yeah, right.
You have the committee appoint directly to the Town Planner?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that, so, let me just thinking aloud here, Amy?
While you're doing that, you might wanna have some alternate structure as well, should it come to pass that either the planner is no longer occupied position or the planner is unable to convene a meeting if it has a regularly scheduled meeting.
Do we request the Town?
Anything as you can.
We could have the executive director, uh, serve at the, uh.
The heft of the.
The heft of the, uh, course of luck.
Okay, so let's get the first concept down, is, is how do we have that, that we're going to have this, how do you have that, Lauren, that we're gonna appoint a executive director, did we say? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. We're gonna have this committee report.
To Planner.
Report to the Planner, and that it'll be just a, a regular committee other than that.
Yep.
How about if we have him report to the Planner who will act as executive director of the committee?
Yeah.
So that they have that.
They have that.
That sounds fine, I think, yeah.
Yeah, and that should work, by pr- I mean, we gotta have a certain.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so how about if we change that, I'm just thinking aloud here, is, is that the, the, this will consist of seven members, seven citizens. They can do what they want. And that the, this board here will report to the, uh, Town Planner, who will also be the executive director of the com- of the, uh, of the committees.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
That, that should give us what we, what we want, that's the robustness that we want. And it's pretty clear, it should, should work. If it doesn't, keep in mind, we can change it.
Yeah.
We don't have to, we can, this is within our.
Or she could serve at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, always does, cause we can change anything we want. Let's keep it simple. Set this up this way, that it's always the Town Planner, and that Town Planner is the executive director of the committee and there'll be seven, uh, citizens, okay? Diane, you okay with that?
I think so.
Excuse me?
I think so. In theory, yeah, but, you know, I should've gone to law school.
Paul, you okay with that?
Yes.
You heard what we said?
Yes.
Yeah, so there we got that committee, so if you have it phrased that way, all right?
Yeah.
Now, now, the other thing I wanna, uh, suggest, do we wanna make a motion on that?
Let's make the motion, we can still remember it. Who has to read that?
All right, I'll make a motion that, I'm gonna make a motion that this committee be constructed such that it has, um, um, it has seven citizens, um, plus, um, and that, and the group will report to the Town Planner, who will also act as the executive director of the committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And can you change it to that effect, if you got that? Okay?
Yes.
Second thing I wanna make as a proposal is, is that this is gonna be a very robust committee, one of our better ones.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna have the Board of Selectmen or even other boards annually, and these are annual appointments. You know, I have a, a political discourse and disputes over who's gonna be on this committee. Cause as time goes on in future boards, in no other town, this is by nature could be. Anyway, I'm gonna suggest that the Board of Selectmen position always be Chair of the Board of Selectmen. That, for example, that would be me for this year, next year's whoever's chairman of the board, it always rotates. That's what your suggestion is.
I won't say naked power grab, not.
Well, it can be vice chair.
But no, I agree with you, I agree with you.
I'm here only temporarily, so, I'm thinking more that, 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 that adds more robustness to.
No, I agree with you, I support that part.
Input from the public?
Yeah.
Patrick Kennedy, Vice Chair of the Master Plan Committee, fifty-nine years on Road Drive. With regard to the terms of this committee, this is gonna be a ten-year committee. I would suggest that you consider not making these one-year terms and potentially having this committee change over wholesale every year. This is, uh, gonna be a committee that's gonna have to really dig in, come up with priorities, settle on initiatives for the town, including zoning changes, potential zoning changes, other big project ideas that are gonna take more than a year. I strongly suggest we consider making the terms longer than one year. And in that regard, potentially stagger them, might be a good idea, it might be difficult when you're starting out a committee. But also to have, um, the member of the Board of Selectmen change every single year with the change of the chairmanship is gonna be very disjointed to this committee, in my, in my view, with a ten-year term.
That's probably a good point, but these committees typically appoint from their, from their membership. Generally, they re-up the same person, uh, to these important, uh, additional assignments. But, um, um, so it may be, if they re-up their self-appointed committees, they, the one-year might, it's not a hard and fixed. It's not like one year and then you have to change.
Right, except for the elected board, it's like.
Or it's just be one year, you get reappointed, like the CPC rep for, from the, uh, planning board was the same guy.
Yeah, it is. What we could do, um.
Kevin's suggestion was that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen change, would change every year and that would change on this committee every year.
I'm not overly concerned about that, only in that, um, well, I, whatever it is with the Board of Selectmen, I want it to be set in solid stone, because that will create problems for the future boards, if not, yes, it's, uh, so, and I'm not so worried too much about it being the Chair and that by the time someone's the Chair, they're pretty knowledgeable of what's going on, they can handle that. So, that doesn't concern me, but to, but, but what Patrick's idea though can be res- respected here, or it's useful, I think, is that we could make the, the three-citizen terms three years. So the, the three-citizen terms will be three years, okay? And then on the others, um, they'll do, do business as usual, representative. And, and I think for our own sake, we should make it, can be vice chair, but I suggest it be whoever's chair. Say the truth, it'd be better for the, this board, but, uh.
Well, I think there has to be, I'm s- sorry, um, I'm, I'm kinda digesting this. This is a pretty powerful committee and, um, I think it's important that it be responsive. I think it's important that if there's dissatisfaction in the town in this committee, that our annual elections, we can express the dissatisfaction, and I'm not sure how that works in there. And I haven't really thought through the process, but I do want, with the amount of power that we're giving to this, I do want it to be very closely tied to the, um, I do want it to be political, in the good sense of political, in that it's the people's voice.
I'm gonna only push back in terms of power, because, you know, I, I, a town meeting is the only powerful body in town. I, I think that it's more.
Which is, I agree.
It, this is, this is really an execution implementation team, um, so, you know, we want people that, I mean, it, it, it's a selectmen-appointed committee, so, you know, we can yank people any, you know, or change the. I, I really see this as a working committee and a supportive committee and representatives from the, the critical committees in town that are working on plans that can go back and represent the, the action steps, you know? So, I, I don't think the power is there. You know, I think, looking at this, all of the people that are, all of the positions, or at least four of the positions are, are chairman.
They're not, they're not changing, right, right.
Who are subject to, they, they are subject to annual elections, so they could, within their, within their committee.
But the three-year appointment.
And some of them for planning and selectmen are actually elected officials. So, I think that maybe, as Kevin pointed out, maybe we do the citizens at large and give them a, a, a longer term. And, you know, most likely, um, who, who's a good example? You know, Peter Pascatori is the Chair of the Open Space, um, Committee. You know, most likely he will continue, because that's kind of the, the, the habit of our committees as Chair, and so he will bring some continuity. But we'll leave it as one, because that committee could, ch- it's a chair.
And it also shows a lot of.
But actually, it isn't, sorry, it's a representative.
It also shows a lot of respect to the, uh, town citizens, because they're the ones with the longest terms. Again, counterbalancing the fact that it, there's gonna be an executive director. And, um, and then I think that the fact that it does rotate one, once a year amongst these others
Yeah.
is okay, because it shows change. So we got a whole balance of stuff here.
Yeah, I like that talk.
We got actually moving people around so the, they don't have into this too much. Uh, but the citizens are really here for three years and yet we've got an executive director that's gonna make sure that the trains can move on time.
You know, the, the other thing is, with the one-year representatives of each of these individual committees, they can always reappoint. If somebody really is doing a good job and they enjoy it, they certainly are probably gonna get reappointed.
Yeah.
You know, you can see that.
As the chairman.
What's that?
As the chairman, you mean, from the various.
No, from, no, let's see what.
No, it says just member, I misspoke.
Planning board, so the planning board, you know, if somebody on the planning board has a particular interest, um, it's nice to see, cause you get the, the citizens, but.
And that's what typically happens.
They're really continually, yeah.
So, so, wait a minute, the, the, the planning board is appointed by the planning board, or is the chairman of the planning board, the planning board?
No, representative of the planning board.
Rep- so they can do that?
They can pick. Committees choose on themselves, they're.
So I thought there was something that was chairman.
It can be chair, but I think it.
We're gonna encourage, I would think we'd, I think, I think as this gets going, uh, the chairman, they would wanna be, the chairman would wanna be and the boards would wanna have their chairman on this, cause this is gonna be so robust.
I think we all agree.
Yep. So the citizens are three-year terms and everybody else is one year.
And what about the Selectmen? Do you wanna elect a different person every year, or do you wanna, I don't know?
Well, the Chair changes every year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think we ought to make it the Chair for us. And for the other three boards, they're gonna have to make up their own, we won't tell them what to do right now.
Yes.
So.
If you wanna stagger the citizens.
Let's try not to.
You couldn't do a one-year, a two-year, a three-year for the initial, um, appointments.
Yeah, I think they need to be, they need to be staggered.
And then they would come, that would force them to be staggered over three-year time periods. Probably up to you.
Right, well, we'll see who we get for applications, right?
Well, we might, we're setting it up now, do you wanna stagger it now, um?
Yeah, yeah, we should.
Cause that means we're gonna get applications, and some are gonna be, are you for the one year, are you for the two year?
No.
I'm just trying to keep things simple. I'm wondering if we shouldn't just go, he's a three-year. It's not gonna disrupt this committee to rotate the three citizens every three years, right? Or is that correct?
No.
And we don't need, I mean, we got, we got an executive, we, what's unusual here is we got an executive director who's, they have to be consistent. And, uh, we got, yeah, I mean, I'm saying.
So we're, we're gonna appoint three right away and dispense forever from having a rotating, so it'll be like every three years, it's a big deal to elect. And the Board of Selectmen would do that every three years.
If that looks weird, we can change it, but I'm just trying to get this thing launched.
Yeah, I think, oh, to get it started, I think we could.
Let's get it launched, give everybody three years and then figure out, I don't know.
Right, I mean, just the natural order of things, there'll be roll-off and I think maybe when the three-year, then we stagger it out.
Yeah, I think, I think we ought to have a goal of ultimately staggering it, but not in the beginning, because we need.
Let's, let's get this launched for three years, cause there's a lot of work to do on this committee, you know?
So, so three terms for the three citizens at large.
Yep.
Yep, yeah.
And the, the planning, open space and harbor will elect and appoint theirs once a year. The Board of Selectmen will designate that that'll automatically be Chair. I think that's better for this committee.
Yeah.
It's not a power grab, I'm here for only a limited period of time.
Oh, you're just so sensitive, I was a cheap shot and I couldn't.
Very cheap shot, very cheap, I'm very, I'm gonna lose sleep over that.
I mean, you know, the, the other thing that's out there is the, um, public outreach, which I, um, that we should. Um, what we should put in there in the charge, in the public outreach for the initial.
Yes.
Uh, implementation committee, um, maybe the first year, have a public outreach for, um, town.
Yes.
I'd even make it broader, let's say that, you know, we expect, we put in there, there'll be public outreach, just as you said it. But that being, uh, in close communication with the public through forums is, is part of what we want them to do. We want them to be iterative with the community. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
So put it in, as Paul said it, that we want the initial public outreach, but we put that in as an ongoing function, that we want this committee to have, be, meeting regularly with the public. I'd say, actually, if we wanna get to it, we could say at least two public forums a year.
Yeah.
At least, say, so that you can do what you want, but we wanna ensure that built-in.
Yeah.
So you put in, uh, two necessary public meetings per year.
Yeah, it'd be two at least, it's, yeah, two mandatory at least, yeah.
And have a public comment period allowed in each meeting, just like we do.
At all meetings, yeah. Yes.
I mean, the implementation team's gonna be so effective, these are gonna go right to public hearings in a lot of ways, if we do this right.
This is gonna be, this is.
You know, we're gonna be dealing with bylaws and things like that, so.
Yeah, that's gonna be good. I, I suspect that we have enough, see, this'll launch, you know, let's just go for a couple of years and tweak it as needed. But this'll get this going and it'll show the community, the town, that we're moving quickly on this. This is a, gonna be a dynamic committee, it's set up differently and, and I think it's exciting.
So who has the verbiage to make the motion?
Lauren's been making.
She has amended it.
Kevin, in terms of establishing a quorum, we'd have to have, the first meeting would have to have four members.
It's a seven-member committee, yeah.
I mean, in order to have, if, if we don't have the other three. I mean, in order to have, if, if we don't have the other three picked yet, for example. The first meeting would, would be when there's four members that are picked.
Yeah, if, and if you had, yeah, we'll get right on, we'll get right on putting a public.
And I wonder if a hybrid of your idea would be to have a Chairman open and close the meeting and take votes, but that the Town Planner, or if you wanna call her, the Position Executive Director, would, would run the meeting, other than open, closing, and, and, and taking votes.
Yeah. I, I don't, yes, I said, I don't know, I hear what you're saying, I don't know if we need to specify that, 'cause I've been on committees like this before.
Yeah.
And a, as this will operate, essentially, the executive director's gonna be, have a lot of influence about how this is run.
It just works out.
Much like the Town Manager has, you know, as, as, much as we'd like to think we're totally independent, you know, the Town Manager has a lot to do, so I'm comfortable leaving it, I don't wanna get too much in the weeds of how they operate. But if they don't, if it isn't the problem, then I think we can make changes, but I'd like to launch it.
No, I.
So, would you be comfortable, the, the Board, Selectmen, would you be comfortable with a motion that basically called for the, you know, the raising of the Cohasset Master Plan Implementation Committee as, as discussed and amended this evening?
That's what we just did, right?
Yeah. Right.
Second.
There you go.
And, and she's got all the verbiage.
Yeah, I think we trust that we know what we're agreeing to without going through the whole thing.
I was gonna make the motion.
Well, there's a motion, there's a second, and now, let me say, discussion period, let's go ahead and do it and launch it. However, you'll have this out in the next week or so, we'll put this on for a few minutes at the next meeting, so we'll just take a final look in case we wanna tweak that. We can do that at any time anyways, but we won't be looking to may have any big discussion on it next meeting. It'll be, so we, we'll make that part of the vote, but that's the way we'll do this, we'll take another look at it, but. Uh, that's motion made, seconded, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And nay, that's unanimous, Tracy. Thank you, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Lauren.
In four weeks, you become one of the most powerful people in town.
We, we just let them. We'll notify all these, the four committees of their, to recommend that appointment to the Board.
Right.
And then we'll post the, on the Facebook page that there's seats.
These three seats, definitely, do that, and then we'll push it and put that in the newspaper, and we'll push it through our own social medias. Let's move ahead, let's move ahead to get up with those members, yes.
I'll get a revised version of this for you at your next meeting.
Yeah, make it, essentially, it'll be a final version, we're gonna look at it again, but you can, you can move along on the implementation, we're for the movement. So, Clark, this is the first, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, very much.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing we have on the item is the role, role and function of Town Council. And Mr. Durensis, if you could come forward and sort of frame this, this is our third in a series of discussions of this here we've had, you know, to, for us to educate ourselves and the community that's listening on the roles and functions of Town Council, so that we properly work with them and make the decisions that are necessary. That being said, I'm gonna turn the show over to Mr. Durensis.
Hi, the model that we've been using, and Cohasset's been using for many years, is one that has, I guess I would call a primary care physician, like a family doctor, with a, like a hospital in the background, a firm that has a variety of talents and skills. And that's worked well for the community for a long time. The chief advantage of having that model of a, a family doctor is that you have someone who's looking at the patient as a whole, if you will, looking at the community as a whole. I brought with me some of the people who are the hospital, if you will. It's important to understand that, that one lawyer doesn't, isn't really capable of doing everything. For a modern municipality, there is so much laws, rules, regulations, lawsuits, all kinds of things going on, that it's beyond the capability of one lawyer to be an expert in everything. That's why the model of having one sort of in-house lawyer doing everything doesn't really work. I have a community in which I do that, as outside counsel. The problem is, we end up doing a lot of work for that community. There are times that the in-house lawyer is not available, has a conflict, is not familiar with a particular area, so we have to provide that as out-house counsel. The.
Pun intended.
They, they affectionately call me the out-house lawyer. The, the model that has what I call à la carte, what's missing in that, where there are different lawyers holding different pieces, is the individual who has the overview of the whole situation, who can look beyond what the individual issue is for an individual project that they're working on, but who can look at it, like the family doctor, kind of look at the patient as a whole. The analogy I would use is sort of like a, a, a medical analogy, is if you had a doctor that was a specialist for your right side of your body, and you had a doctor for the left side of your body, that may sound like, boy, they really know what they're doing. But if the doctor who's doing the right side prescribes something that is contrary to what the doctor on the left side prescribes, you don't have a good medical result from that. We've seen cases, and we have one right now, him wanting to talk about it, where town boards end up suing each other, and getting into all kinds of conflicts with each other. So, that's our kind of, and the à la carte that's having all these different lawyers doing different things. We have the flexibility to work with any one of these models, but I think the model that we have is pretty good. So, let me explain how it works. The general family doctor, here's what you need. And then I can turn it over to the person who has the skills to really do it. Who can really look at the particular, as a specialist. So, for example, your general doc, you may call your general doctor and say, I have an ache here, or I have a pain here, and they might tell you, well, you need to have an X-ray done, or you may need to have a specialist in a particular area. We have the specialties that can take care of a municipality, we can do all of it. So, I wanna introduce these stellar people, so I, I think we'll start with John Ruggieri, if you would. John is real estate, land use, uh, you wanna say?
Sure, sure, so, thank you, first of all, Lauren.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, first of all, for having us here, couldn't agree more with Paul's analogy. You know, when I started practicing, most lawyers in little towns did, did everything, you know, you did the gamut, and it's just not possible anymore. And very quickly in my career, which is now twenty-seven plus years, I realized I had an affinity for real estate, real estate transactions, business law. And when you know that stuff and you know it well, you can really help your clients a lot. And then when you have something happening, although it may be within that sphere, but steps out a little aside of it, like in real estate, oftentimes that might be an environmental issue, or something like that, you have to go to that man or woman lawyer who can handle environmental law, and knows that language like an engineer would, because that's out of my realm, as much as I know about real estate and transactional work. So, a little bit about my history, I started working in Boston, graduated from Suffolk University, went to work for a small law firm, did a little bit of real, real estate, did a little bit of litigation, did a little bit of this and that, realized I liked real estate transactional work, went on from there, went to Looney Grossman downtown, was there for thirteen years, and went out, started my own practice for a while, and now I've landed with Brooks and Durensis, which I think is just a fantastic firm, a great, close group of people who can literally walk down the hall and knock on someone's door when you've got a problem, that you need some help with. I've had occasion to work with a couple of you folks, certainly Chris, and a few other people in the different departments here in Cohasset. It's been a pleasure. I would be primarily concentrating in real estate, real estate-related matters, land use matters, things that I know well, and, and enjoy the practice, so it'll be fun to work with you folks, and if you have any questions, you can always feel free to pick up the phone and talk to the, the general doctor first, and then he'll, then he'll send you down to my office.
I want to introduce Peter Berry. Peter has worked for Cohasset, actually, over a very long period of time, but he, I'll turn it over.
Well, good evening, I'm, again, Peter Berry, I've been working with local governments for forty years, for, first as in-house counsel to public entities, and for the last twenty-five years with the firm, as outside counsel representing municipalities and other public entities. So, it's kind of part of my DNA, working with local government, in my ninth year as a Selectman in my hometown of Acton. I've been on every board in town, from the Housing Authority, to the Community Housing Corporation, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to the Conscom, first Chair of the Community Preservation Committee in Acton, and again, a Selectman for the last nine years, so. I, I know how town government works from both the inside and the outside, and I think what advantage that allows me.
Have you ever built a town hall?
Can I even build a town hall?
Let's get, let's get rest of our concerns.
I think what advantage that allows me to bring to the table is, is practical advice about understanding the problems from a practical perspective, and, and providing some non-legal advice about how to get to where you wanna go, and achieve your goals, and protect your interests.
What is your area of specialty again?
I, my particular area of expertise is labor and employment law, which is one of those specialties that Paul's talking about, that you really need to focus on these days, you can't have an interaction with an employee without dealing with family medical leave. That state's not gonna have, well, it doesn't apply to this now municipalities unless you collect, you adopt it, but there is a Paid Family and Medical Leave Act that's gonna be implemented in the state, starting in October of this year. So, you know, all those discrimination, Fair Labor Standards Act issues come up, particularly in public safety. I'm very familiar with all the labor and employment issues, but I'm also, again, from just working with towns and being on my own town boards, very familiar with public records, I've been working on public records issue with the town, which we were able to resolve to the town's satisfaction, licensing issues that I've been responding to questions from the town about, so I have a broad range of experience on municipal issues.
I grew up in Acton, so, I'm sure we, yeah.
Oh, you did, oh. A B high school graduate?
Yes, yes.
So, in addition to my being.
He could've been your principal, he was everything else.
Sure, we know each other, we'll talk.
So, in addition to my being the, sort of the general family doctor, we have another general family doctor, and that's Lenny Koplun. Lenny is the founder of Koplun and Page, and now KP Law, so let me introduce to you Lenny Koplun.
I'm delighted to be here, and I feel very welcome. Yeah, I've, I started, I've been in all those types of issues that you're thinking about, and I've thought about them for a long time, too. And that's why I just created Koplun and Page. And we had a hundred and twenty-five towns, it was too many. What I had wanted to do was cut back, and I had problems with trying to train people, 'cause you couldn't get enough people who knew what they were doing, so you have associates, some worked out, some didn't. And it became problematic. So, it was time for a new management, and I stayed on for a year, became head of the complaint department, and then I thought I was going to go into the sunset. And one of the towns said, would you refer us, we're unhappy, would you refer us to another lawyer? So, I gave them a couple of names, and they said, well, what'll it take to get you? So, I'm back in the business. So, what I do is a lot of what our fearless leader does, and I'm able to answer questions quickly, and I try to do it so that it makes sense, and I can do, tell the tax board work, I know there was an issue with the potential ATV matter, and I was able to advise on that, and I think it, 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 you'll be helped by that advice. And, so basically, I'm a backup person to can try to handle anything you need, and I'm, I'd be here for you full-time, as usual.
And then there's Kim Solat, our trial lawyer.
We know, we didn't have to go on this discussion any further.
Well, I don't know you two folks.
Hi.
Hi.
And I'm not shy.
Pleasure to meet you.
Guess what kind of law she practices?
Harry Thompson, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We've met before, somehow.
Quietly, somehow, where?
Wait, we'll talk.
I like her already.
What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas.
You all know what I do, I'm a litigator. I've been at this since nineteen eighty-six, I won my first case before I gradu, graduated law school. I function primarily in the land use aspect of litigation, represent planning boards, boards of appeals, I've represented water commissioners, sewer commissioners in this town, I've represented members of the Board of Selectmen. Got a new case in today, representing the Chief of Police, strike that, the Fire Chief, strike that, it's normal for me to say that, the Fire Chief, and the Building Board, on an interesting case about smoke. In any event, I think if you talk to any of the folks that I've represented in this town before, I hope that they will give me rave reviews. I think our relationship is very good, it's been, been for a very long time. I started working with Durensis in nineteen ninety-seven, and you, you folks are with, with me now, so it's been a long time. And when I started working with you guys, my hair was all yellow, now it's barely. But in any event, I like what I do, I'm good at what I do, I enjoy it. I enjoy the fight, but mostly I enjoy the win, and I think we've had great success. I'm working with Chris on a, on a matter now, we have a gentleman who was unable to make it today, he's a pro insurance worker. Name is Hargrove, Jim Hargrove, he asked me to send his regrets, but we're working on that brown book matter. I can work on all kinds of issues, litigation's my specialty, which in itself has certain things that you must be familiar with, like rules of evidence, and even when you put your witness on, is she strong, is she weak? Do your couch are between, too strong witnesses, what do you do? How do you get somebody, when they stand, say something to you, exactly the opposite of what they told you twenty minutes ago? And the reason why I can do that is because I build good relationships. You know, I can get with you, I can hear you, I can be with you, I can hold your hand, I can tell you, breathe from your belly, I can tell you, don't worry, you didn't do anything wrong. That's my job, I'm here to defend you, who just read you, and what needs. I'd like to continue this relationship, I think it's both good for me, and I think it's good for you, too. And I hope we can do it, I really do.
We've had a closing argument.
Good.
Yeah, certainly, I know, has it?
So, there, as you mentioned, there's a bunch of other lawyers that weren't able to be here tonight. There's Jim Hargrove that you mentioned, there's also Dan Deutsch, who's a leader in the environmental field. So, when Jim had mentioned consulting an environmental lawyer, we have an environmental lawyer. Then there's Ron Hoffman, does procurement contracts, he's done a lot of work for Cohasset over the years. Some of you might be familiar with him, you might know his name. So, the point is, there's a whole team of people, so the, this model is one, again, that has sort of the, someone who's committed to the community, sees the community as a whole, and has all these specialties, who can handle particular things, whether it's real estate, or, or labor issue, or litigation, there, there are people who can handle that, but there's somebody keeping the, the whole picture, trying to figure out what's best for the community. I don't think you get that same. I don't think you get that same, that same feature in the à la carte model. And on the in-house lawyer, again, the in-house lawyer is not gonna have this kind of team, will not have this kind of resources. So if I had to make a recommendation as to which model I think you ought to use, the recommendation is use the one that's worked so well for the town for the last couple of decades.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
The number of attorneys in the firm and you've kind of like reinvented yourself recently is my understanding. So a little history of how that worked out and the number of attorneys in the firm would be helpful.
So.
Are the standing broiling? The thing that I found valuable here and the reason I'm here is because we don't have associates. We don't have newbies learning on your dime. This is really a professional group here in Acton.
We were part of a bigger group. The group split in half. And then over the last year, we've been rebuilding. So the original group didn't have John, didn't have land. So new people have joined us and have reconstituted us.
Any other questions? Especially this is to be an educational session generally about, you know.
One thing I think is key, which where shenanigans oftentimes occur is town meeting. And I think that town meeting, anything can happen. Anything can get done, anything can be executed. And I think the board of selectmen has to have someone who is there, maybe one or two, that can easily understand when there's gonna be a change in an article or anything like that. That is able to think on their feet immediately and put up a defense of something that may be sending something off the rails at town meeting. And that's one of my biggest concerns at town meeting is anything can happen. It's the wild west because that's how town meeting works. So prior to that, all the articles I think has to, they have to be perfect. They have to be really good. And when it comes to town meeting, we oftentimes need help. And that I think is one of the biggest things where that's time alone. That's something very strategic that's gonna happen at town meeting, which may change the nature of the town with that. And I know a few years back, there was an article that if I had known, I would have just said, I want to make an amendment to the article. And it could have cleared through the hoops and got over the, you know, over the bar. And it didn't. And that, to this day, I understand that how town meetings can really change things acutely. And there has to be someone who is ability, you know, whether it's one or two people there from the town council point of view, that can help the board of selectmen with the situation occur like that. That's one of my-
So let me respond to that by saying, with regard to Cohasset, Chris and I work on the warrant together. Chris prepares a warrant that's usually pretty, pretty close to what it really needs to be. He's pretty good at that. So the tweaks that I make to it are really not often substantial. I had to rewrite the harbor zoning bylaw last year. It was a little more significant, but Chris didn't write it. It came from another source. We had to rewrite it. So a lot of work goes into the warrants.
No, I totally understand it.
And in regard to town meetings, I have a state record of holding, of being personally at one thousand two hundred and twenty-four town meetings.
You've seen it all?
So I've seen it all. I'm a town meeting junkie. I actually have a great faith in town meeting. I think the voters, at the end of the day, tend to be pretty smart. And if you spend the time to explain things to them, ultimately they'll do the right thing. So yeah, sometimes things go in a different direction and go south, but it can always be brought back the next time with a better explanation. Or more numbers or more thoughtfulness on particular issues. So sometimes big issues do take one or two times before they get passed. So I wouldn't see that as, as a bad thing, that the voters are careful with something. I know the state legislature, for example, requires every bill to be passed three times in each house, first reading, second reading, third reading. So in our system, we have just one vote at town.
Yeah, that goes back to the bans of the weddings.
So we do have, we do, we do put a lot of trust in what they do for that one vote. But it can always be brought back at the next town meeting with an amendment or with an adjustment. And then it's all subject to the attorney general's review, and they may find indeed for some, some change.
You're suggesting we swear people in that they haven't spoken truth?
That'd be nice. That's the town meeting.
And just sort of a structural question because I don't think we're here to drill down on any detail.
But just in terms of, and you may be the one to answer this question, just in terms of our legal needs. How much of it is sort of general, general council work and how much of it is specialists? Because financially, that's structured differently. Is that right? Do we pay a retainer for-
It depends. I think I say that way to say that. We, when we have contract negotiations, there's more of a demand for council labor stuff. Because we have an HR department now, it's kind of radically improved our long-term ability to stay out of litigation. And a couple of cases that we had when I started, we were able to get out of FCAT. Actually, because we document stuff in the HR department, we had a case that went to the MCD and it was dismissed because we had documented everything. So having internal documentation is really helpful, honestly. That said, as Kim knows, this random litigation, the random litigation she mentioned now involves one millionaire who built an outside gazebo with a fireplace, which is going to another millionaire's property, who's a set of, and he's suing the-
That's amazing.
The millionaire doesn't like the smoke, is suing the other millionaire. And that brings us involved for not putting out the smoke.
Because we gave the permit or?
Yeah, I mean, well, because we need to stop the fire. So it's really, it's really, yeah. So I really, I can say that, you know, you see it, you see it all actually. And we're just, it's really a properness.
We are in public session, I'm just reminding everybody.
Yeah, the, I don't mean to be disrespectful of the position.
No, no, I'm sorry.
But Kim's seen it all. And it's very helpful to have somebody who's been in that position. Because a lot of times it's gonna be worked out. I mean, it hasn't, I haven't had to go to trial.
In terms of just like other general, you know, like land use, like how often are we using attorneys before, you know, at meetings, you know, for-
Again, I think that's something that's changed. I do think having somebody at meetings is helpful.
Yeah.
We did, we went through a stretch with having, you know, a regular, Paul was here for a stretch early on. I think it kind of depends on the need. Having somebody present can be very helpful. And particularly when there's a big subdivision that's coming through that we, that's looking like it might be litigated. Jack has personal experience on CONSCOM, there's been some issues on having an attorney present.
I've been sued that many times.
But there are times when it's very helpful to have an attorney as part of the process. Because just with town meeting, the more preparation you put into it, the better result you have at the end of it. So if you manage the process properly. I do think things have evolved. I mean, even in the last five, six years. And I think the needs are, they continue to evolve. And I do think procurement questions, as we professionalize that operation, have become more, there's been more, you know, issues that we have questions about, estate law changes. Peter's talking about the-
All right. Can I just add to that a little bit? The financial arrangement is a fixed retainer for the general stuff. That's why when the issue with the harbor plan came up, that's something that would be in the retainer, doesn't cost anything extra. So the point of that structure is to encourage all of you.
Seeking the office.
And our plan is to use the part that's essentially free in order to prevent falling into a situation where you're putting out a fire to stop the smoke.
Got it.
So it's-
It's absolutely true because I say to people all the time, the less you see me, honestly, the better if you will.
Okay, anything else from the board? Any questions? Anything else you have to say on this subject? Okay, good. Thank you very much for coming in. Joe and Kim, great to see you folks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you very much. Nice to meet you. It's a story of pleasure. Take care, yes.
We really enjoy all of you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All the dogs over from way back.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
No, he's never been here.
August 9th.
He's our assistant town manager.
The next item on the agenda is we're gonna set the date for the special town meeting and, which is on the agenda for the date we're gonna set. We don't have to do a lot of thinking and open up the warrant. So if this is your first warrant opening, pay attention.
Exciting.
So the tentative calendar, which I, which we'll, Chris will distribute tomorrow, as you're opening the warrant tonight, for a special, the warrant's open for seven days.
Okay.
For citizen petitions, a hundred signatures. I don't know if there's anything looming at this point that anyone's particularly hot for. Annual town meeting is a ten signature requirement for a citizen petition, just so you understand the context. And then we're gonna release the notice of intent to the boards and committees tomorrow. Everyone will have until the thirtieth to get those in internally. By the tenth, the next official meeting of the board, I'll have a draft warrant for you to look at. For the next couple of weeks, there'll be reviews. The twenty-fourth of September, you'll do a first vote on articles. Hopefully we can add in the advisory capital of the common league. I have, October first is the, is a meeting, right? We have that set? Well, I'll have a line, we can double check. I have it on my calendar. Because this has to go to the printer on the fourth. That's being citizens' hands by the twenty-first, it's two weeks.
So October one, on that meeting, we're gonna have to finalize the warrant by votes, yeah.
Right, that'll be a vote. And then, and then November fourth, two weeks, for a special town meeting, the warrant has to be filled in so it's two weeks of amendments. And we usually try to have the warrant done so it gets printed and distributed the old school way. The town bill's still the priority, it's printed in the mail really.
Are there any major warrant, article lines here?
We, because the town's historically tried to stay away from, at least the practice has been to stay away from major changes. And most of it's just financial. We did meet, Kevin and I met our, you know, monthly meeting with schools. They dropped a couple, bounced a couple of those off us tonight. We're gonna see if we can't get into the, it's usually allocation, free cash, balance, and reserve funds, and if there's any projects that need funding in the short term.
Probably there's nothing that's, like, unusual.
Nothing that I'm aware of at the moment. No, I think it should be fairly obtained, knock on wood, right? So the orders were started, so I don't have the numbers on free cash stuff yet, but I'll have to shoot those. But it's a fairly tight turnaround, but it's early, early this year. We've been going in December. Because there's no local election in early November this year, it's easier to get it done probably in the month of November, so we have the rest of the year.
For all of us, yeah.
Okay?
My only, my only concern is just the thirtieth being the deadline for-
It's internal.
Internal for-
It could be later. I mean, obviously, because I don't have to give you a formal warrant for the tenth.
Right.
I already know that water is looking to do a couple of capital things. And so it's, we've been talking about it for about a month.
Okay. I mean, as long as internally, they understand that it's tight with vacations and-
Yeah, and I mean, if I, if I have the thirtieth as a deadline, I can always give a little bit, you know, with knowing that on the tenth, well, actually before that.
Okay.
So what, what date are you suggesting?
November fourth, it's on Monday night at seven P.M.
Are there any elections this year?
Not locally, not here. There's a couple of city elections, but they don't affect us. This is the, this is the-
It's the fifth of June, standard.
Yeah, this election day is November fifth, but there are no local elections that affect Cohasset at this point, unless it's a special election or something randomly.
I have us having a selectman meeting on the fifth. We don't usually do that.
Well, because there's no election this year.
No, a selectman's meeting, yeah.
Oh, is there really?
Town meeting on the fourth, so we'll look at it later in October. All right, okay, so what do we need to do? So we can-
We open up the-
Well, set the meeting for November fourth, then open the warrant.
Okay, so a motion to set the special town meeting for November fourth.
So.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, I oppose, not unanimous, Tracy. We don't need to set the place, do we? When we do that, do we?
No.
All right, the next thing is we need to open the warrant, which means, do you explain what opening the warrant means?
When you open the warrant, it officially starts a clock. For special, it's one week. For annual, it's a, it's in the bylaws.
Okay.
So annual goes on for multiple weeks with a deadline, that's laid out in the meetings. But for special, because it's a quick turnaround, it's a one week period for citizens. And if you open it, it'll be tomorrow, it'll close, it'll close the business on the next Tuesday.
Right.
Okay, so a motion to open the warrant?
Sorry?
I'd like, um-
Oh, question? Do you have a question?
No, I was gonna, would you like to open it? I think she should open it.
Okay, let's have a first opening of the warrant by Carrie Thompson.
Okay.
And I'd like to second.
Oh, well, this is really getting into the-
Motion to open the warrant.
I'd just second that motion.
Oh, God, any discussion?
Tough to be able to-
And just I want you to record in your diaries tonight, my first motion was approved. Okay, what next, Leah?
So I've got it on tomorrow, four. So that's all for, that's all for the meeting.
Okay, so now we're going to the end of town.
So town hall project, this is our regular update. So as you all saw, I've been advised during the deadline hours that the painting is underway.
Yep.
There's, they're about forty percent done with the project. The goal is to get it done by the end of the month.
Can I introduce something?
Sure.
In case people ask, the color's a little bit, you know, I think it's called ivory. I forget the exact name.
If you actually go to the last page of this, you'll see there's a color representation, so.
Were you gonna get to this to explain what it's like?
Yes, I am. This is your part of town, I'll go right to it.
I apologize.
No, no, no. The last analysis that was uncovered, someone called it today a paintologist, which is not quite what it was. But that's as good a term as any, a paintologist. They found fourteen levels of pink on it. And so the town hall has been many colors over the years, okay? During the most recent period, after the last renovation for roughly thirty years, it was kind of an ivory color with different colored trim. And I think what happened over time is it faded and then it just became more white and it was painted white. So rather than just go white, which is gonna get dirtier faster and, you know, I think this color, it's called classic light buff.
So we're giving town hall the black.
The buff, I mean.
The buff, baby, shouldn't it?
And then, and the common historic commission was consulted and the chairman said fine. In fact, when you come and look, it actually looks a little more classy. The trim is white and the-
So this is actually the color that this building was originally painted in? It just became whiteish all the time?
Well, the last one was really, yes. Yes.
And that was thirty years ago?
That was from the thirties into the fifties.
Around nineteen thirty. This is the color that it was nineteen thirty.
And am I wrong? I believe this was the color that was designated and planned, that got approved by town meeting and went through the historic common district
Yes.
a year and a half ago as the recommended color because it dated back to the last renovation.
And to be, you know, so that's the reason it's slightly different.
Right. And the sad reality is, we're gonna be redoing that building. So this is one of those tests because when we do the full renovation.
Yeah, so this wasn't random and it's real. And it is, I mean, it's a little, it's what's called classic light buff.
When you first see it, it's like, but then it, I think it looks good.
Yeah, I think people, and again, this was-
People will warm up to it.
Yep.
There have been discussions.
Oh, yeah. Phone calls, emails.
So the other thing that I just wanted to let the board to, there's been some extensive water damage discovered. Which I understand, this project is not meant to rebuild the building.
No.
There are areas where it's impossible to paint without the requirements. And if you see in the back of the building, something exists.
There is an absorption factor.
What's, what's, just as disturbing, if you see the last set of photos on the far side of, go on the wall that runs along the parish church. There's some extensive rot unfortunately on the outside. This was an outside unit that was put on that building at some point in the past.
These pictures are stunning.
Yeah, so it's, I don't really, you know, we can't really say what's, I think this is telling that when you get behind the walls, there's gonna be a lot more issues.
Hopefully there won't be any bodies.
Need to...
So there's gotta be some, some, some change order work. This is beyond the scope of, but we have some money to be able to do.
Yes. I was gonna ask you about that. I mean, do you anticipate that we're gonna need any more money at town meeting?
I don't think, no, no, we, at this point, no, I don't think so. There's a site meeting tomorrow. I'll have a better idea tomorrow. So, um, so far, it's coming, I mean, otherwise the project come along well. They have, they had to miss a couple days because of the rain, but...
They got a good week this week, I think.
Yeah, yeah, they made a lot of progress this week, yeah.
Great.
They've got a good crew on every day, so...
That's great.
So at seventeen twenty-three house, this beam here is in spectacular shape when we did our siding. This is not one of those.
That's the nineteen eighty-six house.
I know, nineteen eighty-six, I'm saying seventeen twenty-three, this, this beam on our house, on the full length of it and it is intact.
I, I might go further, Kyle. So just to let everyone know, there should have been a, a reverse number one call today, but line strip will continue this evening.
There was a call.
Water Street and Mainz, I'm just reiterating if anyone hasn't seen it, it's kinda, it should have started by now, we've been at this meeting.
It just started.
There we go, so be careful. So you can't park on Water Street, you can't park on North Main Street tonight. Uh, so that, uh, that should make the, that should complete the, the basic striping. And there's gonna be this, some additional work that's been, I don't know if you went up to high school, it's part of improving the traffic pattern. The, the entranceway has been widened, the one by the athletic field.
Yeah, right.
To allow better flows in and out of the parking lot and that's being striped. And there's a proposal to try to spruce up the crosswalks a little bit, maybe in some areas of town, not the Brooklyn's, but the ones that are a little less more drab, make them a little more colorful so that they're noticeable to people. Uh, so we'll see where that goes up next.
So on potential cost, overruns, et cetera, where are we now on pricing and...
Well, at the moment, we have, the, the contract was seventy-some odd thousand dollars and we actually have a ninety approved at that meeting, so we...
Twenty-nine was...
Yeah, so we actually have some pushing in there. There is a maximum number of change orders you can make anyway in a contract, but at the moment, we're okay. But I, again, I'll know better after the second. But the, the, the one thing you have along the side, that's the worst obvious, most obvious.
So what, you, you completely lost me. The change orders are how much?
We don't have it, I don't have it. I don't have the numbers yet.
We don't have it. So what's our, what's our budget now?
The budget is, uh, the contract was seventy, I, I, I think it was about seventy-seven and we have ninety-nine. So we have an ability to add some. Plus there was a, there was a built-in amount into seventy-seven for some repair work anyway.
You're right, okay.
But I think that's being spent now on the back side of the, the side, the historic structure, that whole side piece is, is fairly extensive. And that, by the way, that unit's gone and, and it's also failed, so it's not even used anymore, so. There was a chilion for the front room.
Well, that's, I, I looked at that and I said, well, why do you think it's rotten underneath there? All the water, all the years just coming down there.
And, and apparently in this building, the flashing was not properly installed when this building was built. That's what I've been told, which is the reason that water has been getting in the house, so. That building is actually pretty good, all things considered. This one. There's, there's more issues that don't necessarily show their service, so. That said, they're being addressed. So the painting, you know, weather permitting, uh, we should be done by the, you know, next November.
Not at all.
And, uh, the, we have, I, I will get you more information, um, by September twelfth. It's been announced there's a four-mole rubin cutting of the Cunningham Bridge. The governor is, is coming to Cohasset.
What's the date?
September twelfth, it's a Thursday. I'll provide more information, uh, but I just wanna let you all know that now. Because what I've been, the next meeting is only two days in advance and I just found out today that it's confirmed with the governor's schedule. So it'll be coming down on November twelfth, uh, September twelfth to formally dedicate the Cunningham Bridge.
Good.
That's exciting.
September twelfth, September twelfth.
Yep.
I believe it's in the morning, but again, I have to double check that the details are being looked at on the...
Okay.
Uh, and that's where we are.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a selectman update. Diane, please.
Um, the only thing I wanted to say, Charlie Higginson brought it up earlier, which is just the speed. Um, I think it's time that we have that, that next conversation about speed limits in town. Um, it's, it's been madness. There was a lot of chatter on Facebook. I've had a lot of personal people reach out to me. I had somebody just, why I come at the top of Nichols, as if a left turn onto Jerusalem was one road. And I like drove up onto Leeley's, like driveway because it was somebody just going, like that, taking, so. It's really crazy. There's a lot of kids, a lot of bikes and, um, I think it is time for us to have another conversation with Chief Quigley.
I, I will tell you that the conversation's already started.
Great.
Several weeks ago, I had conversations. I happened to drive through some other towns because I was visiting a town manager friend to the west. I don't know, it's multiple towns have this fundamental speed limit, which Charlie Higginson raised, that I know was discussed about a year ago. I've talked to the chief at Public Works, uh, and they're in the process of coming up with a plan and I think we're gonna re-recommend, recommend that the board reconsider going to a fundamental speed limit with exceptions. So it'll be a base speed limit and then higher only work for speed. I just think it'll be easier.
Yeah, I agree. Less signs.
And a whole lot of, and less signs, but also a lot of other communities have done it successfully.
Area of flashings.
Uh, so in the last year and a half, there's been a lot of communities that have done it. The towns adopted the legislation to allow the course line of symptoms, so.
Great.
Probably, if not the first big September, the second.
Great, thank you very much. I'm done.
Um, somebody called to me and asked about, I guess on Blackrock Road, that little triangle park that's there. And there's parking on the far side up against where the, where the, where the cliff is. There's parking there. He was wondering whether or not to move those giant rocks on the triangle piece in to allow for four more parking spots on the side that's towards the water.
Jason has a plan because I've been on this for a couple of years, yeah. And I know Jason...
It's only a cut through from...
Yes, Federico.
Yes.
It's a cut through from Hall to Jerusalem Road, but you can go the other way, you can go the wrong way. But that little side street that's there really is just for parking and whether to push it back so you can have parking on both sides and have it, you can do it one way.
There's been some, yeah, it, it, there has been some, like, you said about the Blackrock Beach.
Yeah, right, I can't remember what that's called, but it, it, people are starting to pull up on there too and...
And they put big rocks, you keep doing that, but you wanna just push them back enough and...
The, the other, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, but just on that, Chris, um, I have a bunch of pictures. There is a very small trash barrel there. I know I've mentioned it before. It was Sunday morning, trash was everywhere. And I, one time I drove by and I took a picture and there were four white, like kitchen garbage bags filled with cans. So I, I really think we should consider, and it's a DPW, it's, it's their call, but I think we should reconsider just taking that, taking that garbage can away and, you know, I'll print a laminated sign and, and it just say, you know, please take whatever you bring.
People know, I, I, I absolutely, people know that you don't leave trash. But if you put a barrel there, you're telling people that's where trash goes.
It's like, you can leave your trash.
Yeah.
And they're always people, I think, take it out.
I was, I, I was in a hurry or I would have stopped. I was like, this is gonna wait till Monday because nobody's gonna pick it up and it's gonna be everywhere and in people's yards and on the beach.
Seagulls together.
Yep, exactly, so, anyway, sorry.
John Doe.
You done?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes, I actually think for next summer, and we've talked about this a little bit, that we do need to have another discussion about our facility stickers and beach stickers and, you know, dump stickers and whether we should consider separating those and what our rules are with that. I think it's time in town for another big discussion about that before next summer. And just everyone keep enjoying the last few weeks of summer.
That's a conversation that the clerk and I want to have a...
Yeah, so, yeah.
I, I'd echo that. I'm hearing a lot of people about the, there's an incipient, or there's a conflict between the Sandy Beach Association and people who can't park, so I think we need to address it. What I wanted to address is, we have in our harbor, it's very crowded harbor. The mooring field is pretty much at capacity. They are issuing some more moorings that Lori had held back because of dredging. However, I talked to Sean Caneely of the Sailing Club and I know from the yacht club, there's an awful lot of kids learning to sail. There's a lot of kayaks, there's a lot of rowing in the harbor and it's congested. It's also, um, starting to get dangerous. We have people come, larger power boats will come into the harbor. They don't realize that there's a little kid lurking behind there in a sailboat who may or may not be able to get out. So I think that, that we really need to be very much aware of the danger to our kids. And, and adults who like to kayak in, in the harbor, it's, it's getting...
Is this, is something that the harbor committee should be looking at or do you think that...
I think they're aware of it, I think they're aware.
And Sean's on the harbor committee.
What are you suggesting?
Sean is on them.
What do we do about it then? Are you just highlighting?
I am just highlighting something that we should be aware of and we should also look at. And Sean brought it up to me. He said, you know the number of children, our kids, who are learning to sail? One of the fantastic things about Cohasset is the number of kids who learn how to sail, but you don't really realize how many kids, young kids are in that harbor and that's something we should be aware of.
Good. Okay, and then Tracy, won't we put the sticker discussion that Carrie mentioned sometime in December, one of those meetings? To start that? Is it December, okay? Or do you want us to wait till you're ready? Because I know you're working on it.
We'll work around Carol's schedule.
All right, as long as I just wanna give it to me to it, okay.
Right, because we have this, we sell the stickers in March, so we need to roll out.
Yeah, we gotta go.
Whenever you're ready.
Well, I'm sure you know one of the issues, people are saying that the, uh...
Why don't we get to it?
Sandy Associate, well, we'll talk about it.
So the Troyka meets once a year, as you know, and it consists of the chairman of the board of selectmen, chairman advisory board and the town moderator, which we did, we met three times. And we made our appointments, which we completed night before last.
Great.
And so I won't let you know who they are and I think we have really an exceptionally strong, really, group of appointments here that we made. So on advisory, uh, we appointed Fran Collins, uh, and Megan Wheeler. So, and they're, they're for three-year terms. Um, on, uh, capital budget, we appoint, and, and also on advisory, two nights ago, the final position, we appointed Mary McGoldrick.
Right.
So that's a great get for that committee too. So those, those are really to advisory.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's, uh, good, th- those are, those are good three great appointments. And on capital budget, Brian Host and Sam Waitman, we reappointed. And then as the associate member to fill in on expired term, Michael Fecto, who had a really strong background in the financial area. Um, and then finally, uh, we appoint, appointed, um, Ms. Jane, uh, Martha Gengemini to the, um, Design Review Board. So all in all, we felt, I feel really good about, that's a good, strong round of appointments and, uh, process went very well and, uh, we feel very pleased about it. I'm reporting that to you folks, okay?
Excellent, great.
Okay, with that, um, is, uh, minutes, seven twenty-three nineteen?
They're not ready.
Either one of them are?
Tracy has, no.
Okay, yeah, we'll do those at the next meeting.
I'll get them ready.
I have, I have no topics reasonably anticipated by the, within forty-eight hours. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, Tracy, we're adjourned.